We're key here in the Aldermanic Chamber. The city clerk will offer the prayer and Alderman Cle will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us all, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Malizzi Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tanza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
We have 13 members present.
Alderman Laws had a family emergency this evening and Alderman Gidge is not going to be joining us tonight. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. First of all, early in our agenda here, we have, we are recognizing 68 Hours and 68 Hours of Hunger with the 2019 Gate City Light Award. Now, this is a volunteer award made by the Mayor's Volunteer Recognition Committee. We have Carol Weeks and Margot Bell here somewhere on behalf of the committee, and Sean Nelson is on the committee as well, although he may not be here yet. But as you will hear, N68 Hours of Hunger has been working very diligently for a long time to make sure that kids that go to our public schools and elsewhere have enough to eat. They have also been very instrumental in the program Meals for Kids, which is a partnership of the city, the soup kitchen, N68 Hours of Hunger, the Salvation Army, Southern New Hampshire Services, United Way, and others. So, as you will hear, they are very deserving of the award, and I'm really happy that they're here to receive it. And we have representatives of 68 Hours and 68 Hours of Hunger. One thing that's on the agenda early on is the appointment of Kim Kleiner to the position created by the Board of Aldermen of the Administrative Services Director. This is a position that we recreated after it, after it existed for some decades, 25, 30 years, and was phased out for a little while, but we've brought it back in response to the audit which was performed regarding the Assessing Department. Now, the Administrative Services Director, before and now, supervises a number of departments, manages a number of departments in City Hall, not only assessing, but purchasing, IT, personnel, risk, and working, and in this position can bring about significant improvements in terms of City Hall operations, I believe, including the Assessing Department and the other departments. Kim Kleiner is very well-suited for the position because she knows city government intimately, has been working with all of these departments on a daily basis for several years. The prior holders of this position, and I think mostly of Russ Markhu and Maureen Lemieux, have also been people who had a lot of experience with city government before they assumed the position. There has been some comment that the position should, I think, two comments of substance. Number one, the position, some people have said we should look outside, but we have a perfect person internal, and in addition to that, we want to make immediate improvements. If we were to wait to do a search and then bring, find someone and bring them in and educate them as to the very complex set of circumstances that exist in City Hall, we'd probably be a year in the process. And during that year, there would probably be dissatisfaction because we hadn't been doing anything, you know, just waiting, waiting, waiting for this new person to come in. The other comment that's been made is that Kim doesn't have an MBA. Well, I know that Russ Markhu, who I worked with as mayor before, he was the Administrative Services Director, he'd been hired by Moorel. When he started the job, he did not have an MBA. Now, we worked with him, and he earned an MBA during the time he was serving for the city, partially paid for by the city. It was a joint effort, and he was looking to go on into city management and eventually did that. But he worked very well, and if, and Kim Kleiner has the same kind of knowledge regarding city government that he did. If you were to follow Kim Kleiner around for a few days, you would find that she comes to work at 8:00 AM or earlier, she works throughout the day, I don't even know if she ever takes lunch, she, you'll, and you would, if you were to kind of, you'd have to hang around here quite a bit, and you'd find that she's still here at 7, 8 o'clock at night, often on the weekends. She's a Nashua native, she has a background in business and accounting, she knows and loves Nashua to her core, and there is no one more dedicated to city service, to the city of Nashua, to doing a good job for the taxpayers and citizens of Nashua than Ms. Kleiner. I know many of the Board of Aldermen have worked with her carefully, closely, as have many, as have department heads and others, and I think there are people here supporting her, and I'm asking the Board of Aldermen to confirm her appointment so that she can begin work tomorrow, making, improving services for the, for the citizens of Nashua. One more thing, Madam President, it just happens that today is National Decency Day. And the point, and as a result, I followed on and I issued a proclamation honoring Nashua and creating Nashua Decency Day. And the point of this National Decency Day is to promote, promote a civil discourse, and I'm reading from some of it. "Fundamental tenet of civil discourse is the understanding of and respect for those differences that should exist in a democracy; that basic decency in conduct encourages understanding and respect." And by this proclamation, we endeavor to encourage decency in our community. Now, I think that unfortunately Nashua, in the last couple of years, where the decorum has traditionally been very good, and where people have shown mutual respect in debates that, where there are fundamental differences, our decorum has been very good, without heated rhetoric, without accusations, without accusing people of, with very heated rhetoric and divisive rhetoric. Now, here in the Board of Aldermen, for years, there have been some fundamental differences. We had an Alderman who sued, not this particular, who sued the city, but, and we always had civil discourse, we always, we never was there, you know, angry words or anything, there were fundamental disagreements. Take the disagreement here, or the issue that's before us tonight on the cigarettes. Well, I think people have conducted themselves, there's a lot of differences, total difference of opinion, but the people have conducted themselves on both sides with decency and civility and respect in the sense that no accusations have been hurled, people have made their points and listened with respect to the other side, even though they totally disagree. So I think in Nashua, we need to rededicate ourselves to decency, to the idea that we are going to treat each other with respect, we will not make serious accusations lightly, and we will debate the issues and disagree, but all in a unified effort to move the city forward. So I hope that we can expand this effort, become potentially a city of kindness, which some cities are, and return to the days when there really weren't the type of bitter disagreements that we observe at times in the last couple of years. In any event, that's it, Madam Chair, Madam President, that's all I have for tonight, and I see that there are many people in the audience, so I will end my remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor? I'll start on this side. No responses. Okay. Recognition period.
First reading of Resolution 19-139, recognizing N68 Hours of Hunger with the 2019 Gate City Light Award.
There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the second reading of R19-139.
Second reading of Resolution 19-139, recognizing N68 Hours of Hunger with the 2019 Gate City Light Award.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage of R16-139.
R19-139.
I'm sorry, R19-139.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Tom, are you reading it?
Yep.
Okay. We'd like to invite the folks from N68 Hours of Hunger to join us.
Whereas, the Mayor's Volunteer Recognition Committee, sponsor of the Gate City Light Award, commend N68 Hours of Hunger and its volunteers for generously sharing their time in the spirit of community and giving. Whereas, N68 Hours of Hunger volunteers to serve the community with a mission to meet the nutritional needs of those schoolchildren who confront 68 Hours of Hunger between the free lunch they receive in school on Friday afternoon and the free breakfast they receive in school on Monday morning. These volunteers organize, pack, and distribute over 260 bags of food for local children on a weekly basis. Whether it is food drives, collecting, or packing, this organization is 100% volunteer-run, and its impact is tremendous. Whereas, N68 Hours of Hunger and its volunteers support the Nashua community with dignity and excellence, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the city of Nashua that N68 Hours of Hunger and its volunteers be recognized, thanked, and applauded for their vital contribution to the well-being of Nashua and its residents, as well as their dedication to the Nashua community, and be presented with the 2019 Gate City Light Award.
Communication from Stephen Elliott relative to remarks made at Board of Aldermen's meeting.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Lori Wilshire, President, Board of Aldermen, relative to the reassignment of Resolution 19-134, adoption of strategic planning goals.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. So tonight, we have our public comment period relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening, and we have 21 guests signed up to speak. We typically have a 15-minute public comment period, I'm going to allow a little flexibility this evening, but what I would really appreciate is if someone's already said what you have to say, that you don't get up and repeat everything over again, we really want to hear what you have to say, but we don't need to hear it 21 times, so if you have something new to add, feel free. So, the first person calling up tonight is Stephen Elliott. If you'd give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Elliott, 256 Pine Street. I just wanted to thank you for adding that communication I gave to you guys last week. It seems like there's not a lot of time left for me to accomplish the goals I'm looking at accomplishing. Just in the last two days, a Norwegian oil tanker that was transporting Saudi oil was attacked by Iran, and in the last day, a Saudi oil transport pipe was blown up. So, I think, after I quit my job, I didn't mention this, after I quit my job, which was in military stuff, there was a, the Dow had about approximately 90% correlation with 1937, which was right around the time World War II broke out, and some of the trades I made at the end of the summer last year and at the beginning of December created the yield curve inversion, and so, around that time, I found that my property taxes had doubled. I just talked to my neighbors the last, this past weekend, none of them had their property tax assessment change. Mine doubled. I removed a room from my house, so there wasn't, didn't make any sense to me. It seems like someone or some entity is trying to increase my financial costs for me, to not have me accomplish the things I need to, to make sure that the United States is safe. So, thanks for putting that communication up there. I'm going to be using, if, I should be able to access it on the Internet, correct?
You should. And Mr. Elliott, are you here to talk about something that we're taking action upon this evening?
I guess not. Well, for the decency thing, I think it's absurd, and the next time this happens, I'm going to be as undecent as possible. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Judy Blachek.
My name is Judy Blachek, and I live at 560 South Main Street here in Nashua. I'm here in support of Kim Kleiner's new role in the Assessment Department. I've known Kim for many years in several volunteer capacities, and in those, oh, I need my glasses, hello, she's always been smart, capable, and hardworking, and very professional, and of course, those were all jobs where she was volunteering, there was no pay. So if she can do it there, she certainly can do it here at the city, and I think she's proven herself thus far, too. Her experience is in accounting, and therefore she's skilled in process, and I really do think we need that in the Assessor Department, so I'm here to support Kim. Thank you.
Paula Johnson.
Good evening, Paula Johnson again. I still live in Nashua. I'm going to talk about R-18-073 because not every member was here for the public hearing, and I'm just going to say that no cronyism, that the next highest vote getter should be the one that should be able to be put on the boards. That's all I really have to say about that. Simple, easy, and fast. And I got a few more things. O-19037, the tobacco. You know, we can't legislate everything in life. I get it, that these 18-year-olds, tobacco, I have my son smoke, so I'm not happy with that, but he's an adult. Parents should be able to hopefully try to talk to their children, no matter what age they are, they're still our children, and tell them about how bad tobacco is and vaping. But to legislate it, someone from Hudson who lives in Nash was going to buy the pack of cigarettes or the vape in that other city town, they're going to come here. Can the police stop everybody and card them and say, "Are you 21? You can't be doing this?" No, they can't. The police have better things to do and more important things to do in this city, and we know that they do. We still have an opioid crisis here, and we still have people that break in and rob people, and there's been incidents with knives now, you know? Maybe we should regulate, no one can own a knife now, too. But to do this, I understand the reason behind it, but you just can't legislate it. It's some things you just can't do, and I applaud you, Alderman Jettie, but I just can't see it happening when they can get it every place else. If you can vote at 18, you can drive at 16, at 18, you can't tell them what to do. They're considered adults at this point in time. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the appointment of Kim Kleiner, and I like her, I think she's great, and I'm just going to say a few things here that I think. I calculated her income, I want to say HR Director was very nice to me, he gave me all the appropriate information that I needed. Her salary has gone up, it's about 21%, somewhere around there, $19,284. That's a lot of money for an increase. I know she's capable in doing a lot of things, but when the mayor states that this job has been resurrected, the thing was, when I was an Alderman, we had an assessor in the Assessing Department, am I correct, Alderman Wilshire? We did have an assessor, Attorney Bolton, we had an assessor. But we have questions about some assessors now downstairs. So the question is, we had a full assessor who ran the department, we don't have one now. He was fired, I guess, or he resigned, I don't care, but he's gone. So now we're putting somebody in a position that we don't have somebody to answer to. And I think that's a really important position. We're having a lot of problems with the assessments in the city, it isn't good, and I think we, if we're going to move her to oversee, like we had Maureen Lemieux oversee everything, this position isn't brand-new, it just went away for a while, and if you wanted to oversee all the other departments, I would say, get an assessor in here, and then she can do the overseeing of everything. But she is not an assessor, she is not a licensed assessor, she's not an appraiser, and that all is part of the job and is a very important piece of the job. Thank you.
Eric Kilbane.
Hello, Eric Kilbane, 119 Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I want to thank you all for listening to me today. I've been here for all these meetings. I know that some people here want to be everybody's mother and father and do what they can to crush the vaping thing, but once you're 18, like people have children, like my parents were under 21, they were 18 years old, 19 years old when they had me. My wife, she had a son at 19 years old, she's an adult. People at that age can do what they want when they're that age. Somebody lives in Hudson, he works in Nashua, he's coming to work, he's changing his kid's diapers, just say, he's late, he's speeding, he gets pulled over the Hudson Bridge into Nashua, he's vaping. Okay, so he gets written a ticket. Okay, here's one for speeding, here's one for vaping. He says, "No, there's no nicotine in this vape." You know, there's some vapes that don't have nicotine, right? Because you just type it up, Google nicotineless vapor. Boom, they're all right there, they're designed to help people quit smoking. So this guy gets pulled over for speeding, he's late, he's late for work, now he's got two tickets, now he says to the police officer, "There's no nicotine in here, it's no nicotine in this vape at all." So the police officer takes out his nicotine tester, if there is one, I don't think there is a nicotine tester, but he says, "Well, we're going to have to confiscate this, and you're going to have to go to court, and then we'll somehow test it there," or whatever, whatever's going to happen to this poor guy. So he's late for work, he's in trouble with his boss, he's got a kid at home, just because he crossed the line of Nashua, vaping at a legal age. It's just too much, too much, you know? Let's just leave it where it is at the state level, and then we'll take it from there. It's not for everybody to decide to be these people's parents, you know? Be your own kid's parents, you don't have to be 18-year-old kid's parents, you don't have to be 19-year-old, you don't have to be 20-year-old kid's parents. What am I going to do if somebody comes in to buy a cigar? I don't sell any vape, I don't know a whole lot about a vape, but I looked it up, nicotineless vaping, boom, there's a ton of them, and that's what they're designed for, helping people quit smoking. So I can't tell a 21-year-old, 20-year-old, 11-month guy who's been buying a cigar on Father's Day that I can't sell it to him, he's got to go to Hudson. It's just, it's insane, it's like collective punishment here. We're getting pulled in with this underage vaping epidemic in high schools, I saw the bag, I don't know what happens with the bag, if these kids get fined, if their parents get notified, or what, but they're not 18, they're underage, it's illegal. So I hope you all just consider what you're doing here and try to make the right choice. Thank you very much, I really appreciate you listening to me. I've spent 15 hours on this, I'm a businessman, when I'm here, I have to go pay somebody else to work all my shifts. I don't know if any of you other people here employ other people, or have to deal with employees that have to cover your spots, but let's just try to make, do the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Cream.
Jeff Cream, Celeste Street, Nashua, I'm here to speak in opposition to O-19037. So I, I've had two kids go through the Nashua North Schools, and one of them just graduated last year, and I, you know, obviously this is evidence, it's a little bit of just individual cases, but I asked them, you know, "Did you have friends, did you know people who had vapes or had cigarettes and things taken away at school?" And they think so, I was like, "Well, did any of them ever get fined?" Like, "Fine? No one ever got fined?" And I thought, "Well, how can that be? Because, you know, there's an existing RSA right now that has a, that has a fine of up to $100 for having tobacco products on school grounds." But it doesn't appear that we're enforcing it, I mean, we could probably pay for a special election with the bag of, the bag of vape things we had here last time, and we're not doing it. And I think sometimes it feels good to, you know, to walk out here and feel like we've done something, we've changed lives, we've passed a bill, and we're going to stop you from smoking, because that's kind of fun, it feels good. But what's not fun is dealing with the kids and making them go and pay a fine, and, you know, maybe they should do it, but we're not doing that, we're not enforcing the laws we already have in the books. So are we going to enforce this one, or are we just going to walk out of here, you know, pass something else to feel good, and just pile up some more laws that we're not going to actually do anything about? So I don't think we should have this bill, if you'd like to enforce what's already there to keep vaping out of the schools and actually enforce the fines, I think you should go ahead, but right now, I don't think we need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Cream.
National Decency Day, I think that's awesome.
We need your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Melissa Cream, Celeste Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Really awesome, National Decency Day, that's great. I'm hoping you guys will do the decent thing here. I'm about, hear about O-19037, the vaping bill. I think we've proven prohibition doesn't work. I think we've been trying to prohibit people from doing things as adults for years now, years and years, back when we banned alcohol for adults. How'd that go? How's the prohibition going on drugs right now? Not great. When you take away people's freedoms, adults' freedoms, 18, 19, 20, 21, you're interfering in their lives and you're treating them like children. At 14 years old, I was approached to go and smoke in high school. I was at a new high school, I was there by myself, I was sitting in the cafeteria, and this girl came up to me and said, "Do you want to go outside and smoke? Because you could smoke on school grounds." No fine, they didn't take it away from you, they didn't steal your property from you. And I said, "Hmm, no, I don't, I don't smoke, I don't want to go." And she said, "It's okay, you don't have to smoke." And I quickly did the calculation, at 14 years old, that if I went out there, I might end up smoking, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but the next day or the day after that. So I said, "No, thanks, I'm good," at 14. I knew- I knew it wasn't for me. The next day, someone else came up and sat with me, and we had a great lunch. She's still my best friend. She was maid of honor at my wedding. But I knew it at fourteen. An eighteen-year-old can make that decision. If they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it. It's not up to you to be their parent. And then I heard testimony, too, last time, that it's at twenty-five that the frontal lobe is fully developed. So why aren't we making it twenty-five? Why isn't twenty-one the magical age? End prohibition. Let these people be adults. Let them be free. Stop meddling in their lives, like I said last time, and do the decent thing. Let freedom ring. Liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, hi. Michael O'Connor, excuse me, 42 Berkeley Street here in Nashua. And I just have a few comments. I'm gonna actually leverage some of the stuff the mayor said. I spoke to this board back in March after the release of the management audit finding, and I was really curious about the public disclosure of accountability, because my assumption at that time, as you may or may not remember, was I just assumed that CFO Griffin should be responsible. The two major findings were ineffective management of the assessing department and the lack of internal policies to guide operations. But we didn't have the Decency Act back then, Mayor, but you did the decent thing. You stepped up and you said, no, it's on me. Correct me if I got the words wrong, but you said, I'm gonna take responsibility for this, because CFO Griffin, a good man, he just had too much on his plate. He didn't have time to do the job. Decent thing to do. So I voted, and I voted for the mayor, and so I want to believe that he was capable of fixing the mess that started probably well before he took office, which certainly was allowed to fester during this administration, just because people didn't have time to do the job. So here we are approximately two months later, and the mayor has made the recommendation to vacate the chief assessor's position and reestablish the administrative service department as he outlined. So I had all those jobs listed here. I won't repeat the ones the mayor mentioned. But as you all know, because it's in the ordinance, the director is not only responsible for all those divisions, she will also be responsible in conjunction with the mayor and the director of financial services for the short and long-term budget planning, short and long-term property tax rate planning, and shall have an integral role in development of the city's fiscal department. In the next paragraph, the director shall be responsible for the maintenance and repair of all city buildings, including the hiring of necessary personnel. This shall not include the buildings under the control of the Board of Education. The director shall participate in making recommendations for and coordinating necessary capital improvements to all the city buildings with capital improvements. Wow, that's quite a job. So it's definitely a lot to do. So the question that leaps to mind, we had someone in the job who didn't have the time to do it. The mayor, I listened to the mayor in the most recent recording of the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee last week, and I think Alderman Kelly brought up the point about asking, I think her words were, I think the management portion of this makes sense, but the day-to-day technical, whatever a chief assessor would bring to the table, how are we gonna cover that? And here's what the mayor went on to say, that, well, you know, he could bring that up. The director could, and of course, the board can. You can bring that up anytime you think it's necessary. So I'm not here to speak against the confirmation of the director, or Ms. Kleiner as the director. Everything I hear, she's the perfect candidate. I heard those words today. And she's hardworking. I've heard nothing but praise for her. But this notion that this chief assessor work is going to get done, and, oh, by the way, right now, it's acknowledged she's doing, by the mayor, the mayor's words again from the minutes, she's doing eighty hours a week now. But when she steps down just to the one job, she'll, let me find those words. She'll only be doing, well, I'll paraphrase here. It's here somewhere, but once Ms. Kleiner stops doing the two jobs and goes down to sixty hours, we will then have a chief of staff do the rest of the work. So you may believe that. I don't know. When I was twenty-five years old and in the service, sure, we pulled sixty, eighty-hour weeks when we were deployed, maybe even more, but I was twenty-five years old. Ms. Kleiner may be able to do that, but it begs some questioning. So, you know, accountability period is coming up. As I said, I voted for the mayor, and so for you politicians in November, it will be, I voted for many of you as, you know, alderman at large, and I voted for, you know, my ward thing. But there is a time for accountability, and if this job, if this assessing stuff doesn't get cleaned up, I think other voters are gonna hold you accountable. So I hope you do the right thing here. Go ahead. She's the perfect candidate. It's the decent thing to do on Decency Day. We know she's gonna be confirmed. No problem. But would somebody have the gumption to say, don't we really need to fill that chief assessor's office? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Justin O'Donnell. I live at 355 Main Street here in Nashua. Last meeting, I came to speak on the smoking bill, and I'm here again to speak on the smoking bill. Last time, I talked about the dangers of legislating by emotion and letting our emotions and fears drive what we do as opposed to logic and reason. But now let's focus to the logic and reason of this bill. The claimed purpose of this bill is to curb smoking in minors, kids who aren't legally able to purchase anyways, to curb possession of nicotine and vaping products on school grounds where they're already prohibited and the rules are not enforced, or when they are enforced, the students just don't care, because they've proven that those prohibitions don't stop people from carrying out bad acts, whether it's as petty as simply an eighteen-year-old bringing cigarettes with him to school that he purchased legally in Manchester over the weekend, even though that's illegal in Nashua, or as serious as the opioid epidemic that was spoken about earlier, because our prohibition doesn't work. Last time, we had a legion of young people here to speak about how important it is we do something to do something. And I'm here to tell you that doing something to do something, to act on emotion, to make it seem as if you're doing something, while passing a bill that doesn't ban possession, it just encourages them to drive the business out of town, to hurt our local businesses like Two Guys and Castro's, without doing anything to actually punish the kids who will go out of town and bring it back to school the next week? That's legislative malpractice. That's passing something so you can get a headline to tell voters you did something without actually doing it. Now, Alderman Cle was cited in the papers this week about supporting this bill at the statewide level, but not at the local level, because these patchwork of regulations, where it's not illegal in Hudson, not illegal in Manchester, but illegal here in Nashua, where if you were to have actual enforcement of this bill, a student simply getting pulled over, a nineteen-year-old driving from Manchester to visit a friend in Hudson, simply pulled over for a speeding ticket in Nashua, given a hundred-dollar ticket for not breaking the law where he was coming from or where he was going to, but simply for passing through? No. I would challenge instead to reach out to those young kids who came here, who were so motivated to have something done, and encourage them to be the change. Clearly, they care. But if they think there's an issue of peer pressure, creating a culture where smoking is cool in their schools, why can't we encourage them to exert the same peer pressure in the opposite direction, to improve their own environment that they care so deeply about, without passing legislation to force it upon them, but to rather allow them to grow and develop as leaders, as the people who will one day be in these seats in this aldermanic chamber, making the decisions for the next generation? Because they are right. They are the future, and they are what's most important. But if we don't encourage them to think and act and grow as adults, then we're not allowing them to take a hand in the shaping of their own future. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Garofalo, 15 Spitbrook Road. Today marks the fifth time I've spoken to the alderman here on the same subject, despite the last hearing at committee where this was voted down. And I guess it's something I have to learn. After a committee votes something down, I thought that's where it ended, but here we are again. And my belief is, listening to the committee and all the things I've heard the past four times when you guys talk after you've heard from us, is in your heart of hearts, I believe this committee believes a twenty-year-old is an adult, and they are. And I'm not gonna repeat myself, because nobody has said it yet, but they can vote, get married, have a child, adopt a child, join the military, and they can actually buy a rifle. They can buy a rifle, but they can't buy a cigar. It just seems so crazy that this is even coming up. What I need is this group to be impartial and open-minded, neutral and without bias. And I understand that it will feel good to pass something like this. It will do nothing, but it'll feel good and it'll look good, but it's wrong to do it. Smokers are minorities. They're minorities because most people don't smoke, and most people don't like smokers. But that's not another reason to end up passing a bill because you don't like that product, because someday it's gonna come to something you care about. The talking points I've heard in these five meetings that I attended has mostly been about vape and fourteen-year-old students who break the existing law in vape. I have heard it. I have it in my notes here, though, but those laws have to be enforced, and we heard from a policeman that was here at the last hearing that said they have never made a fine or an arrest with that big bag of vape, and they caught these people doing it. Not one fine, not one arrest. You have to take care of business. Are we just waiting for the twenty-year-old driving through? That's the one we're gonna find? In Washington, DC right now, there's been a recent flurry of bills to do exactly what you're trying to do. There's five bills out there right now in Congress and in the Senate to raise the minimum age to purchase tobacco from eighteen to twenty-one. I hope it doesn't happen, but I'm guessing one of these will pass, and New Hampshire and the whole country will go to eighteen. And if that happens, we're all in the same boat, instead of Nashua, New Hampshire being the disadvantaged city of the advantaged state. And that's what it is right now as a retailer. That's the position I'm in, that we will have the Nashua disadvantage in the state, and it's not right to the retailers that are here. New Hampshire uses the Dillon's Rule and not the Home Rule status, meaning that the Nashua government may not engage in activities only if it's specifically sanctioned by the state government, and this is not. Nashua cannot make it a crime to possess or use tobacco for somebody over eighteen in Nashua, as the law exists, and there will be lawsuits if this ends up happening, so it's gonna be costly on both sides. As far as the product I sell, which is cigars, seventy percent of all the cigar purchases are made online, and it's legal to them to sell online in here in Nashua, New Hampshire, despite what you end up putting for a law. So we're losing seventy percent of our business. Brick and mortars are losing it everywhere to begin with anyway, and everybody's struggling to keep their business. But take that away, and somebody else said, well, you may lose two percent of your business. I don't want to lose zero percent of the business. I want the level playing field that I was promised when I came to the state of New Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Olding. I live at eight Royal Crest Drive in Nashua. It's been brought up a couple times in these hearings by a couple different aldermen and by a few people who've spoken, that, you know, if this bill can help even just a couple kids, then it's a good thing. If it keeps a couple kids from smoking, then it's a good thing. Well, now in the year 2019, when the drug wars have been going on for such a long extended period of time, the real thing that we should all come, the truth of the matter that we should all come to the conclusion of is that drug laws and restrictions against drugs make the usage of it more dangerous and more likely that you're going to use it in an irresponsible way, because if you're not out in the open with it, you have to be breaking the law to be using it, which means fewer people can see you doing it, fewer people are around to tell you to stop, fewer people are around to tell you the dangers of it, because you're doing it behind closed doors. Last time I came to this chamber, it was for the committee hearing, so not all the aldermen were here to hear me say this, but I'll repeat just really quickly. Portugal decriminalized all of the drugs in their country, and addiction rates have gone down significantly. That's because people are doing it in the open when they are doing it, and more people can visibly see them doing it, and more people can visibly get them the help that they need. Forcing people who want to do these things underground is only going to make their addiction more likely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Teboom, 24 Cheyenne Drive. First, let me briefly address our 1937 purchase and use of possession and possession of tobacco products. I call for a ban of tobacco products sales at any age. I consider sellers of these products to be merchants of cancer and merchants of death. There's another issue of age. Addiction problems are all around, so why add more products that cause harm and addiction at any age? Next, I want to address the question of the appointment of Kim Kleiner. The new Administrative Services Division will take over seven departments. The seven departments represent a combined operating budget, I went to budget and added it up, as you can see, of about $7 million as your operating budget, and has a responsibility of about $53 million in the management of funds, health and dental benefits, self-insurance fund, as well as the property and casualty funds. Both of these add up, health benefits add up to $48 million, property and casualty add up to $4.3 million. Those are all under the administration of this new division. Now, Kim Kleiner is a nice person. I've dealt with her. Very pleasant. She may be a good accountant. She may be a good staff person, and she may be very hardworking. I know she's been in that office Sundays, because I've seen emails from her on Sundays. But you have to look at her background for a very complex department, seven departments. Kim Kleiner has a degree in accounting from Franklin Pierce, and in her career before she came to Nashua, she held two jobs. She worked for General Cable for fifteen years as a manufacturing accountant and a senior accountant. She worked for Stendex International for seven years as a corporate staff accountant and a senior payroll accountant. Contrary to Mayor Don Cus' letter of her great experience and a great expertise, Ms. Kleiner has no experience, absolutely none, in the assessing department, assessing operations. Ms. Kleiner has absolutely no experience in human resources, as I can find. Ms. Kleiner has absolutely no experience Ms. Kleiner has absolutely no experience in information technology department. Just a reference, information technology is a $2.9 million operation, operationally. She has no experience in GIS. She has no experience in purchasing, that I can find. She has no experience in insurance. She has no experience in risk management. She has no experience in building maintenance. She's an accountant. She's been an accountant for 17, no, for 22 years. Before she came to Nashua, she's been a chief of staff, a good one, to the mayor, basically taking notes and things. I've been in the meeting with the mayor, taking notes and answering the mail. But has she got the experience to deal with seven complex departments? Human resources, information technology, GIS, purchasing, insurance, risk management, city buildings, assessing, $53 million of fund management, $7 million of operational budget? She has none! So Mayor, I don't understand why you would appoint her. The real problem is none, there's no problem in the IT department, I know of. There's no problem in human resources. There's no problem in GIS. There's no problem in purchasing. There's no problem in insurance. There's no problem in risk management, I know of. There's no problems in maintenance of city buildings. There is a problem in assessing, and you're not replacing the chief assessor. Now, the guy that was there, I dealt with him, he was incompetent, and did it right away. I didn't complain about it. A private citizen, at their own substantial expense, brought forth the problem in the assessing department. None of you did, the mayor didn't, none of the city staff did, the attorney didn't, a private citizen who spent $8,000 just on the private investigator. The problem is in the assessing departments. Now, we hear there is an assessor who about 10 years ago was dealing in pornography. That's what I read, and he admitted it. Sleeping on the job, got a PI report. There's the problem. A lot of people complaining about assessing. They're not complaining about GIS, IT, purchasing, insurance, risk management, city buildings. They're complaining about assessing. So I don't understand what you're trying to do. I recommend you drop this insanity of creating a new division. That accomplishes nothing but conflict, in fact, between the CFO position and a new position. If you look at the ordinance, there's all kinds of building conflict. And I should say, Marku, who you keep mentioning, was really the CFO. I was an alderman then. He was the CFO. Carol Henderson, who was budget director, worked for Marku. Now, they called him administrative services, but he was really the chief financial officer. There was no position called chief financial officer back in those days. So my recommendation is, drop this charade. Don't enforce administrative services. Ms. Kleiner, very well, very nice person, qualified as accountant, keep her on the job, she's doing a nice job for you, and get that assessment department under control. Thank you.
Jim Tollner.
Good evening. Jim Tollner, One Sequoia Circle. I'll be brief. I want to take a second to weigh in on this appointment, and I think it's worth mentioning that it has always been at the discretion of the mayor to recruit and appoint his or her choice. It seems fundamentally unfair to speak against this particular person, because the folks didn't like how this department was run in other administrations. Personally, I've had a chance to work with Mrs. Kleiner, and I've found her to be professional. She's someone who has worked within city government and someone who understands city government. I have to say, when there were questions, we heard back from Kim. And if she didn't have the answers, she'd work hard to get you that answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm here to speak to the administrative services position. I think I'd like to ask you to just put it on hold and consider bringing back the chief position. I want you all to think about whether there's enough money in the budget right now to fund both positions. I would hope that as aldermen and alderwomen, you all recognize at this point the need for a chief. And I am so compelled to tell you that I, from the bottom of my heart, I think we need that chief. Assessing is a complex function, and Ms. Kleiner just doesn't have that background. And when the mayor points out that she's going to be a director or a manager, she's managing all other departments that have directors, except for assessing. And Paula Johnson was correct when she said the other administrative services directors had, we had a manager down there, we had a chief. We don't anymore. And the day-to-day functions and the issues that Alderwoman Kelly asked are a serious issue. If you're going to just vote this position in tonight and say she's going to take over assessing as a bare minimum, please move her office down into assessing, into John Duhamel's office. Let her work on the culture and the environment down there day-to-day right now. That's a 40-hour-a-week job. She's got the other 25 to do the other five or six functions, but, and that's going to make up the 65 hours. But I really believe you need that. I've been taking the state statutes class this week with Ms. Kleiner up in Concord. It's been super interesting. But you meet people up there and speakers who are chiefs and managers from other towns that are so intelligent and passionate about their work, and it leaves me feeling a little broken that we can't find anyone like that for Nashua. Why can't we find anyone who's a numbers person, who's passionate about equity? Why does that elude Nashua? You know, what is it about the culture here that doesn't allow that to happen? And if what the mayor keeps telling you, that we can't find candidates, then I beg you to please look at outsourcing, because it isn't fair to us as residents to have such a weak department where the bar is so low that you can't get answers to questions. Raising that bar is going to be enormously difficult. I think it will be more than 40 hours a week. And the last gentleman who spoke has had a wonderful experience getting questions answered. It's far more difficult for us with assessing questions, because we're dealing with somebody who has no background for something so technical. Those questions require her to call the state every time, and she can't even rely on her people internally to go down there and get the answers, and she told me she doesn't, which I am thankful for. We should not be taking any information from within at this point. Not a good idea. So, you know, I think it's vitally important that we bring back that chief position, and I don't want to wait until Ms. Kleiner says it's important, we'll just wait until she decides we need it, or we wait until you decide we need it. How does that happen? What does it take to decide you need it? You know, what do we have to do? I, for myself, can tell you, there's no amount of data I can put on the table that would convince you there's a problem. That hasn't worked. I will tell you, Friday, I had a meeting, and Steve Bolton acknowledged that some of the numbers I was pointing out were too low. I honestly believe in eight and a half months, that's the first time an administrator or somebody in City Hall said, "Yeah, those numbers are too low." I've never had anyone confirm anything. I mean, it's taken eight and a half months to get the confirmation on a number, and I think I've gone way too long waiting for answers, just way too long. You know, the problems are deep, and what you have happening now, I'm sensing the complaints that, you know, you're getting hit with a lot of RTK letters, property files. You are. I'm generating a good bit of it. I'm going to dump another 1,000 pages on you pretty quickly here for RTK. You know why? Because I'm conducting your external audit, because none of you did it. It was your job to do an external audit, and the internal one really didn't work. I prefer not to do that. I have to pay a lot of money for all those copies. Ben, I'm hoping you write that letter and waive those for me, but that's what needs to be done. And I object to what aldermen like Ben Clemmons, sending out an email, telling me this weekend that I need to prove myself more. Get all the reimbursements, get all the travel cards, get all the information out of City Hall to prove that we have mismanagement. When do you step up and look at the data? When do you go get it? Because I have to RTK all that. I have to put staff through a lot of work to get that. I'd rather let you do your investigation and really get the information. Do it. Get it. Look at the reports. Just let me know you are doing it. I won't ask for it. But I don't know how anyone thinks here that they can really run this place without having a chief down there. It's, you know, I sat in a class yesterday, and the chief assessor who taught for the afternoon ran a tri-town up by Lake Sunapee, Sunapee, New London, and Newbury, I think. He was so impressive. He was a man of numbers, and you could tell he really loved his job. And the one comment he said is, "I love a really intelligent property owner who comes in and challenges me with questions. It makes me a better assessor." We haven't had anyone like that in our assessing office in a long time. You can't go in there with a question. There's nobody to answer. So please, if, I don't mind you want to bring the position back, but vote them together and bring back your chief assessor. If you really don't think you can get one, get serious about outsourcing that department so we can get some equity in this town. Thank you.
Mike Appleberg.
Good evening. Mike Appleberg, excuse me, 7 Edson Street. I was going to speak initially about the tobacco legislation, and then I decided I'd also like to speak a little bit about Mrs. Kleiner and her appointment. I think you've heard enough about the tobacco legislation over the last, how many hearings now, to know that, you know, I'm in favor of this legislation for, and I'm in favor of it in the original form, that includes possession and purchase and consumption of tobacco products. My beliefs are based in the science of the mind and the science of addiction, and even though we don't have legislation statewide yet, I think this is an opportunity for us to send a strong message to the state that the time has come for us to protect our youth now and into the future. Enough said on that. So regarding the appointment of Kim Kleiner to the administrative services position, just a personal perspective, I've had the opportunity over the past couple of years to work directly with Ms. Kleiner in a couple of different areas, both as a constituent and also as an organization, which occasionally has needs from the city to navigate various types of services and departments. What I've found is, as a constituent, Kim, I'm just going to call her Kim, has, is a person who does, in fact, respond to your emails at 10 o'clock on Saturday night, and I think that's not because she's here in the office, although perhaps she has the ability to do that from home, but she's absolutely one of the most responsive people, particularly in city government who I've ever come across. She goes out of her way to provide detailed answers, and if she doesn't know the answer, and I think in terms of managing a large division with a large number of divisions underneath her, one of her great strengths is, if she doesn't know the answer, she will tell you that, and she will go get you the answer. So I have a lot of faith in her as a constituent. As an organization, we've had the opportunity to have a number of projects that we put through the city, and what I've found in working with Kim is that she is a person who works well across constituencies. She is a person who collaborates by nature, so she's going to bring in people into the room who have various disciplines and various opinions, various points of view, and try and work towards a common solution. I think that's extraordinarily important in a role like this, which is managing a large number of departments. I can appreciate what Mr. Teboom said about, you know, yes, she might not have experience in all of those various disciplines, but let's be honest, nobody ever is going to have experience, real deep experience, in more than one or two disciplines. What you need in a leader is somebody who can bring people together to get work done. So I have every faith in Ms. Kleiner and hope that you do appoint her and, as a constituent, and both as an organization. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Janet Veluc.
Good evening. My name is Janet Veluc. I live at 41 Roy Street here in Nashua, Ward 6. First of all, I'd like to support the nomination of Kim Kleiner for the new position. Enough said of that one. Most of you realize, and I've talked with you before, spoken with you before, that my life has pretty much been dedicated to protecting the health of our young people. Started out in Connecticut, where I grew up, and has continued here into Nashua. I've worked in prevention for 48 years. I am going to talk about a few statistics that we acquired from an academic survey given at the high schools, just to give you an idea of what some of the issues are. 61.5% of the youth reported, who reported current use, get their vaping devices from someone legal other than a parent. 35.9% of youth who reported current use buy their devices from someone legal, from, I'm sorry, buy their devices themselves at a vape store or a convenience store. And I'll just preface this by saying, all of the participants in this survey were under the age of 18. And lastly, almost 38% of youth reported vaping devices are very easy to obtain. Now, I know this isn't an ordinance specific to vaping, and I realize that vaping is a major problem with youth right now, but the statistics show that 33% of youth who are vaping now, within one year, will go on to use traditional cigarettes. So that's a concern of tobacco use. Some of the other information, we have 480,000 deaths annually from tobacco-related diseases. If the current smoking rates continue, 5.6 million Americans who are currently younger than 18 will die prematurely from a smoking-related disease. Now, this does not only affect an individual's health, but it also has economic costs as well. Experts estimate that the annual societal costs attributed to smoking in the United States were between $289 and $332 billion. This includes $132 to $175 billion for direct medical care costs of adults and $151 billion for lost productivity due to premature deaths. Lost productivity due to exposure to secondhand smoke costs the country $5.6 billion. And about 70% of current smokers' excess medical care costs could be prevented by quitting. Cigarette smoking, the use of tobacco products, is the single most preventable cause of death. By potentially stopping a group of young people from starting, we could be saving a lot of lives. Let's be the example for other towns and cities in New Hampshire and potentially the entire state. States around us that have raised the tobacco wage have shown a reduction in underage tobacco Nicotine is the original gateway drug. It sets up the brain for future addiction. All of the other things that are allowed at 18 do not cause changes in the way the brain functions. And I have a request, and you can deny this, Madam President. One of our youth arrived a few minutes late due to parking issues, and we were, I was wondering if you would allow her to say a few words.
I will add her name to the bottom of the list. I mean, I have people that signed up before.
Okay. And I'm not even going to attempt her name, because I know I can't pronounce it properly. And I'm not even going to attempt her name because I know I can't pronounce it properly. And Vika.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nancy Vaughn.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Vaughn, and I work for the American Heart Association. I am Government Relations Director for the State of New Hampshire, E&amp;M. Our organization is in support of a state law as well as local ordinances for raising the minimum legal sales age for tobacco products. I'm not, I'm going to try to not repeat what was just said and mess up the microphone. Sorry. As you just heard, tobacco use is the leading preventable cause of death. So the key word there is prevention. And that's what Tobacco 21 ordinances and laws really do, is help prevent the initiation of a lifelong addiction to a product that, when used as directed, is intended to, or the end result is to kill you, cause disease, and lead to your death. So tobacco does cause heart disease. We are one of the most expensive medical ailments to have. So there's large costs to our economy for tobacco-related diseases. Beyond the health consequences, though, I just want to leave you with some economic information to consider as well. And so the annual healthcare costs for tobacco-related diseases in New Hampshire is $729 million. Of that amount, $139 million is borne by the Medicaid program. And most, many of these costs are borne by households, whether they use tobacco products or not, in the form of taxes to cover the Medicaid program of almost $1,000 a year, $875 is the dollar amount I've heard recently. Tobacco-related diseases are felt, experienced by the most vulnerable populations. Most of our tobacco users are amongst low-income families, and so low-income youth. Individuals who suffer from mental illnesses, about 33% are tobacco users. Those on the Medicaid program use tobacco products at a much higher rate than even the average adult population. And as I mentioned, tobacco-related diseases themselves cause a burden on low-income families. The, the American Heart Association actually supports not having possession penalties in place on laws and ordinances. We find these are ineffective and inequitable penalties on, again, low-income youth and minority youth. American, African-Americans and Hispanics. Youth have reported that they are more likely to receive citations from law enforcement for these products than their counterparts regardless of tobacco use differences. So I urge you to consider passing this ordinance and really help to prevent young people from starting this lifelong addictive habit. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. June Lemon.
June Lemon. I live at 18 Manchester Street here in Nashua. It's been really interesting listening to what everybody has to say, and I don't want to repeat anything. I'm here to support the nomination of Kim Kleiner. I've heard some interesting thoughts about maybe we need both a director of administrative services and a chief assessor. But Lori Ortolano brought up equity, and that is one thing that I know that Kim Kleiner cares very much about. I've seen her work tirelessly for the children in this district when she was on the Board of Education. And I have seen her listen carefully to every constituent that asks her a question. And if she can't answer it, she'll get back to you. I have been to City Academy, Police Academy, all the academies that the city has to offer. The first person there is usually Kim Kleiner. The person who greets everyone is Kim Kleiner. And the person who answers questions that all the other people can't answer or takes the notes to get back to you is Kim Kleiner. So I think she would be an asset in, as director of administrative services. I will admit, I don't have the technical background to talk about what we need in a chief assessor. But I don't think that knowledge is something that cannot be acquired. And when Mr. Teboom brings up, you know, she doesn't know all of these departments, well, she doesn't need to know all of the details of the departments to be effective in the role as manager. So I support Kim Kleiner for the position of Director of Administrative Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Honero. Helen.
Good evening. I'm Helen Honero. I live at 46 Raymond Street. I'm here to endorse for the position of Administrative Services, Kim Kleiner. I originally met Kim. I am on the State Board of Education. I'm not here speaking for the State Board of Education, but when I needed to get some information from the city of Nashua in the school district, Kim was incredibly helpful and thorough and knowledgeable. And if she didn't know an answer, she would make sure she found it. I think that's incredibly important for any public service, but certainly in looking at the position of Administrative Services, that the director will require someone who is never going to know all the answers, but will know what to do to find out. In her role as chief of staff, Kim has been not only a quick study, but also very successful in being able to understand government operations, understand how this city works, and understand how to collaborate. She's the liaison to the Police Department, to fire and rescue. She is not a fire and rescue person. She is not a police officer. But she certainly knows what to do and how to make things work. We have had this audit, 700 pages, and we need to do something with it. I think Kim is the perfect person and has shown her ability to get things done and to understand how to move forward. I have the privilege of being in Rotary with Kim. I was actually her sponsor in Rotary. Rotarians recite a four-way test at every meeting. It's the four-way test of the things we think, say, and do. And it's meant worldwide to apply as a moral code for both our, both our personal and our business relationships. We're intended to apply that in almost every aspect of our life. That test is, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? Well, that defines how Kim operates in both her personal and professional life. And I feel very confident that she will be very good at this next job that I hope the aldermen will approve. And she will make sure that our city works even better. If it's determined that a chief assessor is necessary, I don't think Kim would hesitate. She would make sure that the appropriate analysis is done, that there's money in the budget to be able to go forward. I don't see this as mutually exclusive, but I think Kim being in the position will help us sort out whatever we need to make sure we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum.
Madam Chairman, Alderman, my name is Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum of 47 Berkeley Street. And before I speak to endorse Mrs. Kleiner, I think my colleagues in the healthcare field would find me remiss if I did not repeat my endorsement of the tobacco legislation, a support passage. But I am here tonight to speak to Mrs. Kleiner's appointment. And I will say without repeating what has already been said, that I affirm and endorse all of the positive things that have been said about Mrs. Kleiner. As someone who has served in a leadership position in Nashua in a complex organization for many years, I have had the personal experience and the observation that you do not need to possess all the skills of all the people that work with you and for you. But you need to be able to listen, to study, and to collaborate. And as has been said, these are things that define Mrs. Kleiner. I know her both as a Rotarian and also for her work in trying to support solutions for the opioid crisis. This is a very complex situation for which she would not necessarily have intimate knowledge from an educational standpoint, but was a very quick study and was instrumental in the things that we've been able to do. I would also say that one of the things that has not been mentioned about her resume is that she has experience in techniques of promoting thoughtful and not reactive change in things like lean and six sigma. You study a problem and you make sure that you do things, not more of things, but to do things better. And this is something that will be a critical factor in bringing some clarity and improvements in the assessor's office and in the services. As someone who also works with people who, in general, and repeatedly and over many years, work 60, 80, and 100-hour work weeks, it's not about the number of hours or the age. It's about the person and the passion. And I have not only received emails from Kim at all hours and on all days, but I've personally observed her to bring her passion to her work, and she is tireless. And I expect she would apply that as well. I have the utmost of admiration for Mr. Teboom and for my neighbor, Mrs. Ortolano. But after listening to the concerns about the culture of the assessing office, I feel even more convinced that the correct thing to do is to put someone in there that will take a hard look at what is needed and then make those recommendations and make those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne St. John.
Good evening. My name is Joanne St. John. I live at 25 Bowview Ave. here in Nashua. I have lived there since 1977. Throughout my many years in Nashua, I have been a community activist, and I have met many, many wonderful people. And one of the, one of the women that I met in the past of 15 years was Kim Kleiner. I'm going to try not to repeat all of the wonderful things that have been said about this amazing woman whom I admire and respect so very much. I just want to say that I do trust the mayor's judgment. I trust the Board of Aldermen that they're going to do their homework. I appreciate all that has been said. If there's anyone who's up to this challenge, I know that it's Kim Kleiner. I trust her judgment. Her integrity is unbelievable. I don't know how she gets everything done. I just want to say that I think that she has a wonderful analytical mind. She's a great team player. She is always up for a challenge. And whatever she does, she does, she puts her whole heart into it and has been very successful on many things that I have worked on her with. Most recently, in the recent past, I have worked with her on a committee to form the Arlington Street Community Center. And once again, she just delves right into it. She looks at every aspect, whether it's finances, building codes, police, you know, whatever she needs to do, she gets it done. I just want to say that I hope that you will support her. And I know that going forward, as Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum said, if she makes an assessment that there needs to be more help or going into this, there's no one better to take, to listen to than Kim Kleiner. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ed Santa Maria.
Good evening. Ed Santa Maria, 15 Spitbrook Road. Vice President of Operations for Two Guys Smoke Shop. I heard some interesting statistics tonight and the stunning numbers about where kids get their vape products and their cigarettes. 65% from here, 35% from there. But for me, the most important number is that 100% of those kids have not been fined, penalized, or charged. I think we need to police this in our high schools, if we're worried about high school kids, and not take this out on the adults, responsible adults over 18 in Nashua. All this does is hurt businesses in the area. And we should concentrate on enforcing the laws at that level where we need to enforce them, at the high schools and under 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Parati.
Good evening. Brandon Parati, 14 Lockmere Lane. I was invited here tonight by Susan Lovering regarding my reappointment to the Nashua Conservation Commission. I was appointed in 2015 to my term by Mayor Donnelly Lozo. And I hope to continue for another three-year term. I thank you, Mayor Donches, for reappointing me. I hope to be sworn in tonight. If you confirm the reappointment, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me. I've very much enjoyed serving on the commission, and I hope to continue to. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vika.
Hi, hello. My name is Advika Rukumar. I live in 19th Preserve Drive in Leonardary. I've come here today to represent the youth of New Hampshire as, in support of the Tobacco 21 Ordinance. So as previously stated, there are many people who have been stating economic effects of the ordinance. I completely understand those. However, as I looked at the statistics when I was researching this past week, according to the CDC in 2017, this is for all Americans nationwide. But you can take a sampling in New Hampshire and Nashua as well. But 40.8% of Americans who said they smoked daily or some days are aged 25 years or older. So you're not losing a lot of customers or market base. It's only about like 12%, but you're still retaining a majority of the people who may buy or use tobacco products in America. And as a member of our youth, I really want to, I'm really concerned about protecting our health because we're the future. And we might be sitting in the same seats that you are all sitting in today. And if we don't protect the health of our youth, as nicotine is a very addictive drug. It's been compared to the levels of cocaine and heroin. And as we're dealing with the opioid crisis in New Hampshire and even Massachusetts in this day and age, I think tobacco might be put to that level if we don't pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions.
Petitions for street acceptance Adelaide Avenue and Pendant Lane.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to grant the petition for street acceptance for Adelaide Avenue and Pendant Lane.
Motion is to grant the petitions for street acceptance for Adelaide Ave. and Pendant Lane. Now, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nomination's, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 22, 2019 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 29, 2019 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 2, 2019 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 7 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 24, 2019 Committee on Infrastructure, excepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 6 Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments. Administrative Services Director. There being no objection, I declare Kim Kleiner, 32B Cortlandt Street, Nashua, duly appointed to the Office of Administrative Services Director for an indefinite term at the pleasure of the mayor. Mrs. Kleiner, would you come forward?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge-
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as Director of Administrative Services for the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Ready.
The appointment has withdrawn.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I'll declare Brandon Parotti, 14 Lockmere Lane, Nashua, and Richard Gillespie, 15 Spencer Drive, Nashua, duly appointed to the Conservation Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2021. If those two gentlemen are here, would you come forward for the oath of office, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Conservation Commission of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I declare Tricia Mullin, 275 Broad Street, Nashua, duly appointed to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 1, 2022. Is Tricia available this evening? Come forward and take the oath of office.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do. Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I declare Nicholas Canakis, 159 Main Street, Nashua, duly appointed as an alternate member to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a term to expire September 11, 2020. Is Mr. Canakis here this evening?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
I believe we skipped Richard Gillespie as a reappointment to the Conservation Commission.
He wasn't here.
I didn't hear you then call his name. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution 19-130, authorizing the sale of tax-dedied property located at 4.5-6 Canal Street.
Alderman, please.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-130.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-130. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-131, authorizing the granting of an easement to the National Mill Yard Associates, Inc. over land located at 2 Pine Street Extension.
Alderman O'Brien.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the granting of an easement to the National Mill Yard Associates, Inc. over land located at 2 Pine Street Extension.
So, your motion would be for final passage?
Your motion for final passage is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lost my place, my issue.
That's okay. It's been a long night. Okay, the motion by Alderman O'Brien is for final passage of Resolution 19-130. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-135 relative to the appropriation of $24,850 from Department Number 194 contingency, account number 70100, general contingency, into various new accounts in the Department Number 106 Administrative Services.
Alderman, Harriet Gathwright.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our 19-135 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-135 by roll call. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman, Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Milizy Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Willschey.
Yes.
We have 13 yeas.
Motion carries. Yes. Sorry. And Resolution 19-135 is duly adopted. There being no objection, I will withdraw our 19-134 from committee and assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Did the clerk need to do something in the middle of that?
Yeah. Second reading.
Sorry.
That's okay. Second reading of Resolution 19-134, adoption of strategic planning goals.
Now, there being no objection, I will assign our 19-134 to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Unfinished business ordinances.
Third reading of ordinance 19-037, raising the age to purchase, use, and possess tobacco products and e-cigarettes from 18 to 21.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of 0-19-037.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
I'd like to speak on that. At this time, I'd like to move to amend 0-19-037 with the version that's on your desk marked amended, and I'd like to speak about that.
Okay. Alderman Jettie.
So, this all started with an ordinance that I asked the legal department to draft. I basically, you know, this started when I saw that the City of Keene adopted an ordinance raising the age at which to buy tobacco products from 18 to 21. And I found out that the state law that makes the tobacco age currently 18 had a provision in it that allows local cities and towns to raise the age. And I found out that Dover did it last summer, and then Keene did it most recently effective January 1 of this year. I had long known about the evils of tobacco and nicotine, and I thought that since we had the opportunity to do that, that we should do so. I basically gave copies of the Keene and Dover ordinances to the legal department, and they drafted the original version of this ordinance. After that was done, when the ordinance came before the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, that committee voted 3 to 1 to recommend final passage. And prior to the full board meeting, I was approached by Alderman Clemmons, asking me to make some amendments to the ordinance. And after doing some research, I found that the amendments that he was requesting were more consistent with what other areas of the country had done. And specifically, the amendments that he requested and are part of this amended version are that, number one, it removes possession from the ordinance, and it concentrates on the purchase, sale, and distribution of tobacco products. So, the criticisms that you've heard about people being subject to being fined for merely possessing the tobacco products has been removed. The argument that people coming from one jurisdiction where it's legal passing through Nashua, where it's illegal and being stopped for some other reason would be subject to being fined, is no longer part of the ordinance. The possession part has been removed. And I was comfortable with that change because not only has my research shown that other jurisdictions that have raised the age to 21 have not prohibited possession, I found out that the model legislation propounded by tobacco-free kids does not prohibit possession. The model legislation recommended by the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, the American Cancer Society, all recommend against prohibiting possession. So, it takes away, and their purpose in that is that they don't want to penalize possession by young people. They want to deny access. They want to make it more difficult for these people to purchase, and they want to penalize people who are selling these products to people under 21. So, with that research, I was comfortable making that amendment. The other change is that rather than making, if this passed, making it illegal for someone who's already 18, 19, or 20, all of a sudden making it illegal for them to obtain these tobacco products kind of denies the reality that nicotine, and the nicotine that's contained in tobacco products and vaping devices, is very, very addictive. That's one of the arguments that the people who want to raise the age have made, that this is very addictive, and it's especially addictive to young people because the young brain is more susceptible to addiction. And as has been pointed out by the people who have testified in favor, you know, remember, some of the people that you've heard from who have testified in favor of this have been the Director of our Health Department, Bobby Bagley, two physician members from our Board of Health, Dr. Capetta, who's a pediatrician, and Dr. Wolf Rosenbloom, who's a pulmonologist. We've also heard from Dr. Alby Budnitz, who is an expert in, you know, he's a retired pulmonologist, but he teaches at Dartmouth now, and he's very active and breathes New Hampshire and the Prevention Coalition. These people have pointed out to us that the brain of a young person is not fully developed. It doesn't, that brain is not capable of appreciating fully the consequences of decisions that they make. And so, these people who up until now have been able to obtain these products have become addicted, and we have to acknowledge that, you know, addiction is a disease. You know, these are not bad people. These are people who have become addicted, and to suddenly say to them, you know, from now on, you can't obtain these products, isn't going to necessarily make it happen. We have to recognize their addiction, and we have to acknowledge that it's not as easy as we might hope to just stop. So, this provided for a grandfathering of this ordinance. So, it says that it applies to people who are born, who are either under 21 and born after June 30, 2001, will be exempt from this ordinance. So, this acknowledges people who will have become 18 by June 30, or the effective date July 1, will be exempt from this. But in the future, people who haven't reached 18 yet and don't reach 18 by that date, it will be illegal to sell these products to them or for them to purchase it. At the last hearing, there was a police officer who came to testify, and he was asked about, you know, will this make it more difficult for you? And I'm not sure that he was completely aware of the wording of the ordinance because he said, well, you know, you got to figure out, when did the ordinance pass, and when did these people become 18? But the way it's worded, it makes it very clear. So, just to remind you, in New Hampshire, if you're 21, you get a driver's license that is horizontal. If you're under 21, the driver's license is vertical. So, this was designed for liquor, for alcohol, so that store clerks can know right away whether someone's 21 or not. So, the same would apply here. Store clerks would be able to recognize whether someone's 21 or not. If they're under 21, then they can look and see whether they were born before June 30, 2001, or not. It's a simple matter. The other amendment is to, in recognition of something that Alderman Gathwright spoke to me about, and that was her concern about that this could be used unfairly towards minorities, that it would be an excuse for the police to impose, to get the young people involved in, subjecting them to citations, to fines, and that which they may not be able to afford, and it would be discriminatory against them. So, I added something that is in the current state law, and that is that someone under 21, instead of paying a fine, they can be required as an alternative to participate in an education program regarding tobacco products, e-cigarettes, or liquid nicotine, or a program for the cessation of the use of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, or liquid nicotine, or the completion of community service as an alternative to the fines. So, this was an attempt at accommodating her concern to allow, rather than having to pay a fine, you know, there were some alternatives here that don't involve the paying of money. So, I would recommend that we adopt this amended version. The, you know, the arguments that I've heard, and I don't deny that everybody is speaking, you know, with the best of intentions and speaking from what they truly believe, but, you know, when people talk about how we shouldn't do this just in Nashua, that this should be, that we should seek a statewide solution, I agree. I think it would be better if the state raised the age I think it would be better if the state raised the age to 21. But the state hasn't. And at the committee meeting, not all of you were there, but at the committee meeting, I told you that I ran into Donna Susi, the president of the Senate, who was on the Commerce, the Senate Commerce Committee, that considered a Senate bill to raise the age to 21. And I had testified in favor of that, and that committee decided to retain it in committee. They didn't, they didn't send it to the Senate floor. And I asked her why they had done that. And she told me that because the law currently allows cities and towns to do this, and that some had done it, Dover, Keene, Newmarket, that they were interested in seeing whether other cities and towns would do this, whether there was support for raising the age to 21. So, you know, they're waiting for us. They're waiting for us to see what we do. And I think that if we adopted this, it would encourage them to enact a statewide solution. The other argument, you know, that I've heard, and, you know, people have, you know, very sincerely said to me that just doing this in Nashua isn't going to do anything because people can just go to Hudson and buy it. And that's true. But, you know, just, even though people can do that, even though people could go to a different town and purchase this product, a lot of them won't. And where this has done, where this has been enacted in other parts of the country, and not only states, we're now up to 13 states that have adopted this statewide. And Vermont is about to do it. It'll be 14 soon. Maine has done it. Massachusetts has done it. Most of those states started with a city or a town in the state doing it. There are, oh, I think it's over 250 communities across the country who have adopted, have raised the age to 21, you know, just in their town. And wherever it has been done, it has had the effect of reducing tobacco use among not only young people, but of everyone. If the young people don't start, if it's more difficult for them to obtain it, and they don't start, then they're not, they're probably not going to pick it up later in life. They're probably never going to become addicted. So it, the town of Needham, you've heard me say this before, was the first town to do it. When they enacted this, all of the towns around them still, you could still purchase it at 18. But when they did it, they were able to reduce the use of tobacco at Needham High School by 47%. And since then, that was 14 years ago that they did it, they just issued a report showing that the numbers of people who smoke in Needham are much less than the rest of Massachusetts. The hospitalizations due to lung cancer are much less than the rest of Massachusetts. The deaths due to lung cancer are much less than the rest of Massachusetts. Complications due from women smoking during pregnancy is much less than the rest of Massachusetts. So I appreciate, you know, when people, you know, doubt that this is going to work, you don't have to believe me. Look at the research. Look at the evidence that in the rest of the country where this has done, and it's worked. You know, the other testimony that we've heard about, about, you know, people who are 18, are adults, and ought to be able to make their own choices, you know, I understand that libertarian argument, that people ought to be able to do whatever they want to do as long as it doesn't hurt anybody else. But the truth is that smoking does hurt other people. Secondhand smoke hurts other people. The vaping, the aerosol from vaping hurts other people. The people who smoke, you know, you've heard the statistics about how, you know, how much that costs. You know, it's like $729 million in New Hampshire for treating people with smoke-related diseases. And we're all paying for that, not just the person who's sick, but we pay for it in higher insurance premiums, because insurance companies have to get money from all of us in order to pay for the people who are, who they're treating for smoke-related diseases, but also Medicaid, you know, directly our tax money. Our tax money pays for veterans who unfortunately, you know, went to serve our country, risked their lives, and came away from it with a tobacco addiction. And, you know, my office is right next to the Delaney's house, and I see these poor guys out there, smoking. Some of them are on scooters with oxygen tanks, and they're still smoking because of this addiction. And, you know, again, I emphasize, people who smoke are not bad people. They're people who have obtained this addiction, and a lot of them will tell you, they've tried, they want to quit, they've tried to quit, and they can't quit. And so if we can stop people from getting addicted in the first place, I think we're doing them a favor. We're not doing a favor to people who are 18, 19, and 20 by allowing them to become addicted. We did it for alcohol. When New Hampshire raised the drinking age from 18 to 21, there was an over 90% reduction in alcohol-related deaths from that age group. So raising the age works, and I hope that my fellow Alderman will support, number one, amending this ordinance, and then if it's amended, hopefully passing it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Just a simple request, please roll call.
Got it. Another discussion, Alderman Clay.
Yes, thank you. I actually quite stunned to see this here, because if I'm not mistaken, when this was brought forward to the Personnel Committee, there was only one person that voted for that, and the rest of the committee voted against it. It was actually, the entire bill was defeated in the committee, and I think it was Alderman Clemmons who said, due to all the hard work, and in all fairness to all of us, Alderman, that we would bring it forward to it. And you pretty much so said that that was the right thing, and I agreed with it. I think it should have come forward. I think that if this does pass, you probably will get this bill. I'm still very much against it. I don't deny any of the science. I think that the science is probably very, very accurate. You continue to bring up the Needham statistics. Well, I'd like to remind everybody that the median income in Needham is much higher. The education in Needham is much higher. The population in Needham is about half of that, of Nashua. Also, some of the statistics that was prior to this, Needham's use of tobacco was already on the decline. So that's a little thing that we need to add to it, and so on. You mentioned about the licenses, the vertical, horizontal kind of license. I'm not going to argue with that, but the truth is, then the police officers do have to sit there with the calendar to say, okay, were they born before this and that? And I think that that's probably what the officer was discussing. We, once Vermont does pass it, we will be surrounded by states who are no longer selling this, which is why I think that New Hampshire has to step up. And perhaps Senator Susi was making the comment about that, she wanted to see what the, what was going to happen out in the towns and the cities. I still think that the state needs to take the responsibility, and whether people want to agree with me or not, that's just my feeling, and so on. As far as raising the alcohol level, Nashua didn't do it. Keene didn't do it. Newmarket didn't do it. Dover didn't do it. New Hampshire did it. And we actually were kind of forced to it, much like Massachusetts and so on. And that was because we were going to be losing highway funding. I agree with it. I agree with raising the tobacco age to 21. I don't agree with it here in Nashua. I think I've said this over and over again, so I'll stop here. Thank you.
Alderman Gathwright.
First of all, I want to clarify what I did say when I testified before in regards to this. And what I did say was that we received a lot of data in regards to this, and I believe it was Ms. Velup tonight that actually said some of the things that I talked about. And when I said that the statistics showed that most of the people that used the vapor and the nicotine were economically deprived, I also said that they were also of color. All right? Those are the two things. The other things that I did say about this is that those kids that were being arrested, okay, were low-income or of color. Now, this is statistic-wise, because one of the things that we have here is the $50 and the $100, all right? And the police said the only way that they could actually enforce this is by putting this, the money there. Otherwise, they are arrested. They get, we've worked very hard in New Hampshire to keep our young people out of the system. And I see this is just another way of putting them back. I've been working at this for a very long time with all the different groups that work with young people. And I feel that now you're saying, well, here we go again. This is another way, you're back again. So this is the main reason why I was against the bill. And the other piece of that is statistics that I didn't hear until tonight was 39.9% of the children are purchasing it themselves. So in my opinion, we should be looking at the establishments, educating our children more. There's other ways I think that we could have done that besides this. And I'm going to leave it at that, because I've talked about it enough, and I've heard enough from a lot of people, and that's my take on that.
Alderman Lopez.
I think if we serve people in a lower economic bracket than Needham, and people who have more diverse backgrounds, then we have just as much right and responsibility as Alderman to represent them in a way that accurately represents their best interests, given the data and the information that we have. So I was opposed to this in the committee meeting, the amendment, because I felt that we wouldn't be doing the best job we could with it by removing the possession and creating a scenario, as was described in public comment, where someone could buy it in Hudson and just possess it in Nashua, even if they couldn't purchase it in Nashua. However, it was pointed out to me in the intermediate week by a constituent that if the state does do its job and does move this forward, then that's a moot point, because you won't be able to buy it anywhere in New Hampshire. You also wouldn't be able to buy it in Maine. People wouldn't be coming up from Massachusetts to buy it here. So that objection, which was the primary piece that I objected to in the amendment, if I put a little bit of faith in the state, then I don't have that objection. I'm not 100% sold on the state doing it, because we do have a record of waiting until the last minute to do everything, as was described with the alcohol. We know 21 at this point is a norm that everybody can tolerate, and that it does make a difference in the lives of people who are younger. Sure, there's always underage parties, but they're not going to the bar, and they're not picking them up in stores. It does make a difference. At the federal level, the federal minimum wage is still 725. Like, I'm not going to, I don't see them quickly moving on anything. I do see more and more states taking over, so I think it may end up being a state-run initiative. But every movement has to start with somebody who steps forward and says, I can't do everything, but I can do something, and being willing to do what they can do. I think the amendment does remove, or at least provides an alternative to the fines in this form of the smoking cessation class. And then the grandfathering, again, in my opinion, if we can do something, we should do it. If we're going to enforce, if we're going to create the ordinance, we should just go all in and say 21, and make it very clear. But again, the grandfathering doesn't matter, if the state takes initiative and moves forward with this. So I would support either bill.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I'm not going to support the bill, I'm not going to support the amendment. The Constitution is quite clear. It says 18. And if you want the state to do it, I would support the state, not the community of Nashua, to have Nashua come to effect. I look at it, if a 16-year-old was smoking or drinking and goes home with smoke on their breath or alcohol on their breath, I can imagine the parents would be quite upset. And I think if a 19-year-old went home with alcohol on their breath, the parents would be equally still upset in 20 and up to the age of 21. But at 18, the federal law says that they can't go home with tobacco on their breath. So therefore, the libertarian side of me, I'm glad you mentioned it. Listen, I also know, part of this, being part of the state legislature, there's 400 wise people up there. And I think they are quite capable to make a decision, to discuss a bill. And in making that decision, I think we can all abide by what the state has to do. I am not here as an Alderman to poke the nose, or the eye, or the butt of the state trying to make a decision. They are quite capable of making the decision on their own. Yet, looking at this amendment, and to my state rep friends, will tell you, we live on words such as shall and may. And I look at Section D, and any person violating the provision of this section shall be subject to a fine of up to $50 for first offense and up to $100 for a second subsequent offense. Now, shall to me, if I was going to put shall to another word, would be will. You will be charged. So we're going to charge the youth for this. Yet, in looking at E, and if I may read it again, any person violating the provisions of this section who is under the age of 21 may be required to participate in an education program regarding tobacco products, e-cigarettes, liquid nicotine, a program for cessation in the use of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, liquid nicotine, or the completion of the community service as an alternative to the fines provided by paragraph D. Well, it seems in paragraph D, you're going to get the fine. Not if, not what, not even if you want to go to a cessation program. And you don't have to go to the cessation program, because it says you may, which, another one word for may, maybe, maybe, or I might. So it's a good attempt, I respect it, but the verbiage, and I think my fellow state reps who handle these issues all the time, know exactly what we're talking about. We get slammed up in Concord when we have the may and the shall debate, and I see others are kind of shaking their head, yet it's right here in an ordinance that's before us now. Thank you.
Alderman Tenzel.
So just to follow up with Alderman O'Brien's final point, the criminal code is full of sections that say shall be fined. What this section doesn't say is that the fine couldn't be suspended or couldn't be substituted for community service. So even if it's there, it doesn't mean that someone would have to necessarily pay that fine as a result of a violation of this ordinance. It took me a long time to make a decision on where I would come down on this ordinance. And I think I may have been the person who spoke with Alderman Jettie about enforcement as a, is a primary offense for someone who the police may think is under the age of 21, smoking a cigarette in their car. Because of the way that this amendment is drafted, I do not have any concerns with that any longer, because I think it puts the, it takes the burden off of the possession, puts it on people who are selling or distributing tobacco. And I think it's more of a balance. I respect all the folks who have a lot of experience up in Concord and in the work that goes on there. I think Concord is looking to the cities and municipalities. I think Concord is looking to the cities and municipalities to see what we do about this. And as a public health, as a public safety measure, I think this is a good start moving forward. It's not going to cure all the issues we have with young people using tobacco and getting hooked on tobacco products, but it's a step in the right direction.
Alderman Gethright.
Okay. The word "possession" was taken out. What was the other word? Distribution. How many young people consistently give their cigarettes to their friends? I mean, you know, they pass them around like they're nothing. So that's called distribution, because they have actually given it to their friends. Okay? So we might have taken "possession" out, made it a little less worrisome for the young people, but the fact that if they distribute it to their friend or anyone, they still have the same issue that they had, had, they had possession.
Alderman Schmidt, and then Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me start by saying I absolutely hate smoking. At 14, I walked into the girls' room at the skating rink, and that was it. I was stuck for 30 years. I can't walk by a smoker on the sidewalk without gagging, without choking. It's asthma at this point. I'm very lucky, that's all it is. If this could stop children from smoking, I think that would be absolutely stunning. However, I do not want to see children punished for this. I do not want to see that. That is the wrong way to go about this. Sellers should be punished if they're going to be selling to underage. There's no question in my mind. There should even be those young underage kids that go into your shops and try to trap you, and you should be punished severely for that, because you can't start kids on tobacco and expect them to wind up living in the end. So that would have to come out for me. I certainly can't vote for this in any way. I also think that it's very unfair to our local businesses. I don't like that you sell cigarettes, but I think it's unfair, because I think the people who are 22 are going to go out as well, out of the city. The other thing is, if we do this up at the state, we can actually increase the tax on this. We can increase the tax, and that money can go to the schools to do presentations that will help kids understand why smoking is bad. Bad, bad, bad. I can't support this, and thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
To some points that were made earlier, I just want to point out that it already is a crime for someone who's 18 to distribute to someone who's not 18. And the argument that keeps coming up in public comment and in the previous committee meeting was that the schools should be fining kids. I don't entirely agree with that, because I feel like if you're in school, you're supposed to be there for education. The problem needs to be interdicted. Things need to be confiscated. But I, in agreement with Alderman Gethright, that fining children is not exactly going to be effective. It's probably just going to trickle up to their parents. So those are already on the field. The difference is that this was precipitated by the statistical evidence that 18- and 19-year-olds are the easiest way for kids who are 14, 15, and 16 to get cigarettes or, you know, tobacco products. They can still get e-cigarettes. They can still get vape products, depending on how they buy them and where, because that legislation hasn't come in yet. So I think that's a little bit of a red herring when it comes to the study, that they can still purchase themselves legally. This would close that, too. And it would make sure that they can't purchase, at least, e-cigarettes if their tobacco products are associated with them. I'd also just make a point, it was brought up in public comment, that, you know, tobacco can be put in the e-juice. Yeah, so can weed. Doesn't mean you shouldn't try to stop them.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
Just a couple of quick things. One, it surprises me that not a single state rep in this chamber will support this bill, yet nothing's being done in Concord. And the head of the Senate has said that they're waiting to see what the cities do. My way of thinking, it'll never get passed, because we got a sample of 100% here saying that they don't agree with it. They'll pass it at the state level, but they're not. The other thing is, last night, on a separately, completely separate decision, there was a rep from Hudson that said, "We're just waiting for Nashua to take action on this other event." So Hudson, Hollis, and Brookline and all the cities are probably waiting to see what Nashua does, and we'll do the same thing. And maybe then the state will act. There are numerous states in the country that have already done this, including several surrounding us. At the national level, they're looking to pass this law. It's, if we don't take action, I don't see any action being taken anywhere. And I think we need to move the needle.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you again. I just wanted to make one more comment that I had forgotten about, and that was the ability for the mailing and being able to mail order tobacco products or vape products or so on. And right now, an 18-year-old Nashua resident still has the ability to do that, just like they have the ability, as we keep talking about going to another surrounding town. I just wanted to remind everybody about that, that, you know, mailing is not, even that they have to get in a car and drive somewhere, they can mail order it. And these days, it's really easy just to do it on your phone. Thank you.
Alderman Gethright.
I just want to say that I'm not sure about the senator's statement, but she is in the Senate. And the people that sit here, we're in the House, and we don't always think the same way. So to make a statement like that, personally, I'm offended with his statement.
Alderman, Alderman Malisi Golia.
Yes, thank you. I find this whole discussion about what we're doing in Concord versus what we're doing here very interesting, especially in light of the fact that our neighbor state Vermont, the House and Senate has passed legislation that they expect their governor will sign. And so, once again, we are going to find ourselves in New England as the whole in the doughnut. And those of you who have been here for a while know I'm referring to rail. And when the state decided to do something, we sitting around this horseshoe thought was not in the best interest of Nashua and the residents of Nashua, we decided to take action. And so, once again, when Governor Scott signs the legislation in Vermont, we will again become the whole in the doughnut. And I think each of us has to say, do we wait for Concord? And as Alderman Dowd was talking, saying, "We don't know if Concord will ever pass it," Alderman O'Brien was nodding his head in agreement. We don't know if Concord will ever pass it. So I guess we've heard from everyone that they support it except for this, and they support it except for that. And yet, I really believe Alderman Jettie and Alderman Clemmons, with some, you know, conversations with folks, have done a great job of trying to put together something that will address the concerns of everyone around this horseshoe. And so, I don't know if there's some changes in wording some people would like to see, and they would like to make those amendments now and make those suggestions now, or if we're just going to vote on it. But again, I guess my thought is, if it doesn't happen in Concord, but we think it's good for Nashua, then that's what we need to do. Because sitting around this horseshoe, we are sitting here representing the city of Nashua. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Move the question. Roll call vote, please.
The motion before us is to, is for final passage of, no, I'm sorry, is for the amendment of Ordinance 19037. All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gethright.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
We have seven yays and six nays. And that motion fails. Alderman Clemmons. Oh, I'm sorry.
Really long time.
That motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So I'm glad that we could come up with a compromise on this. The reason that I brought this forward was because I originally said that I would never vote to take away somebody's right who has an existing right. So in other words, if you're 18 and you currently have the ability to purchase tobacco or whatever, this doesn't take that away. Also, in addition to that, it gets rid of the fines. What I didn't realize until this evening was the, and I want to thank Alderman Harriet Gethright for this, was the "distribute, provide, or give" part of it. And that was clearly an oversight on my part, because I would have never endorsed something that if kids pass around a cigarette to one another, they could be fined $50 to $100. So I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but I can't support this with that in there. And as I'm thinking about these amendments, you know, I, this, I brought these forward because I honestly believed that this legislation was going to pass, and it was going to hurt And I am glad that, I am glad to have brought forward a compromise that a good portion of this board can support. But having said that, there are so many, somebody also brought up to me the other day, well, would a doctor in Nashua be able to prescribe Chantix? Or would they be able to, would a person who's, you know, trying to quit smoking be able to buy Nicorette gum? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. This is something that, you know, has really, really gotten to me. And while I, while we worked very hard on the amendments, I just, I don't know. There's too many, for a city to do something like this, there are too many unintended consequences to really think about. I don't think we vetted them. I don't think we know what they all are. So I don't know what I'm going to do.
Alderman Lopez.
I ask Attorney Bolton if there's any legal definition of "distribute," or if that does include anything from selling commercially or distributing?
It means just what you think it means. If you give this to someone else, with or without compensation, you've distributed.
You all said Alderman Lopez?
I guess I'd like to propose that we amend it to replace the words, the phrase "distribute" with "commercial sales of."
If I can make a suggestion, why don't you just say you want to delete the words "distribute, provide, or give," because I think you're going to have the same problem with "provide" and "give" that you have with "distribute." So then that section will say, "No person or business sells," shall, shall sell a tobacco product, et cetera. So you want to, I believe you want to eliminate the words "distribute, provide, or give."
What paragraph is that in? I'm sorry.
It's B of 304-2.
Okay.
Alderman Malisi Golia.
To Attorney Bolton, that same paragraph, if we inserted "no person," or older, or business.
You could do that.
And that would get rid of?
That would get rid of the liability for one 16-year-old providing it to another 16-year-old.
Right, or an 18-year-old providing it to a 15-year-old.
Or 18 to another 18-year-old.
So are you making that an amendment?
May I ask a question first? Would that contradict any existing state law about having tobacco on school property or anything like that?
I don't think so, but I don't know every single state law, law there is. But it's quite clear that the current state law gives municipalities the right to have stricter rules governing the sale and distribution of nicotine products. So I would say that the suggestion by Alderman Malisi Golia is unlikely to contradict any existing state law.
Alderwoman Kelly? You had your hand up?
I did. I'm trying to catch up with all the things that were just said. In terms of the amendment that was just brought up, part of the amendment, or part of this legislation was talking about making sure that there wasn't access for people who are not legal and shouldn't have it. If we take out "sell, distribute, or provide," that would still allow people to then pass it on. And I know that someone in the chamber was talking about 61.5% of high schoolers get it from someone who's legal other than a parent. So I worry that this just cuts it off at its knees even more so than it has already.
Alderman Cle.
Yes. I think it's a gallant effort for everybody to try to get this passed with the minimum pain to the youth of the city. But with each one you're doing, I've been hearing over and over again that it's the 18-year-olds that are getting it to the 16-year-olds, and it's this and that and so on, and in the school. Every change that you make, you're just watering it down more and more. So I have to ask what the sincerity of this is, other than just to get it passed. And I don't know. Enough said, I'm sorry.
Alderman Jettie.
I, you know, the purpose of doing this is to raise the age from 18 to 21. The, you know, the state law currently prohibits, "No person shall sell, give, or furnish, or cause, or allow, or procure to be sold, given, or furnished tobacco products, e-cigarettes, or liquid nicotine to a minor." Okay? So this, the state law already prohibits a 16-year-old giving it to another 16-year-old. You know, so, you know, it's already, it's already there. I mean, what this was trying to do is raise the age to 21. You know, if we said, "No person over 21 shall sell, distribute," I'm fine with that. But people, it would still be, so I guess it would allow people who are But people, it would still be, so I guess it would allow people who are twenty to, you know, to give a cigarette to someone who's nineteen, but they couldn't give it to an eighteen, or someone who's under eighteen. I mean, that's the current state law. So, I, you know, I have no problem with, with the change. I just want to point out that, that, you know, that the current law that we have, the amendment, that doesn't really, it doesn't make it illegal. It's already illegal for someone to give cigarettes to somebody under eighteen. So, saying, changing our thing to say you have to be, you know, it's only, applies to people over twenty-one, you know, would, would eliminate the nineteen, the twenty, twenty-year-old giving it to the eighteen-year-old, but they still couldn't give it to the younger kids. That's already illegal. And there's not, that's state law. We're, we're not changing that.
Alderman Clemmons, and then Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So, I proposed this change. And some of it came from myself, some of it came from Alderman Jettie, and some of it came from Alderman Laws, who's not here. Sometimes on these things, you, you, I, what I've, what I've learned in, in this, and, because you're always learning something, you know? I used to think that, and I've run on before in many campaigns in the past, that compromise is, is a great thing. And it is. But there are some issues where, and this is one of them, and I've, and I've learned this, where it's just not possible. There's just too many, there's just too many what-ifs and what-haves and different scenarios and, and, and I don't want a all-in, I mean, you could either pass this as it's all and nothing, or as Alderman Cle had pointed out, at what point are we watering this down to just, why are we, we're just basically just violating, all we're saying is that you're not gonna be able to sell to somebody who's under the age of twenty-one, basically, in, in the city of Nashua. And at that point, it's like, well, why? So, you know, I, I, so I, I proposed this, and I, I put a feelers out there in the community. Now, certainly, we've been contacted as Alderman by constituents. I have. I've gotten many phone calls, emails, even got a couple of letters of people writing to me on both sides of the issue. They want it, they don't want it, they don't want the compromise, they like the compromise. I put a post out there on the Nashua Civic Sounding Board just to kind of get a feeler as well for this compromise. And I have to say that it was three to one against it. And I have to say that of all of my, out of talking to everybody that I've talked to about this, it's three to one against doing this. Now, the answers vary as to the reasons why. They're almost universal on the other side. So, on the one, it's definitely a health issue and it's, you know, that, that's what's cited to me. And then also that it's going to stop youth smoking, or at least make it harder. And I, and I get that. It probably would. On the other side, the, 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 the three of the three to one, there are various things that are, that are said. One is it's unenforceable. It hurts, it's gonna hurt those in the lower socioeconomic groups, which we've tried to address here. It's not worth the city's time, it's not worth the police's time, it's a state issue, it's a freedom issue, it's a liberty issue. You know, eighteen-year-olds are adults. If you can carry a gun at eighteen, you should be able to smoke a cigarette. I've heard everything. Even despite, and, and this, this was out there. This was, this was me saying to the public, this is what I can present, what do you think? And three to one, it was no. And yet, my gut still tells me that it's probably in, in the interest of, you know, those that are, are youth to, to do this. Because I think that there's, I think that there's value there in it so long as we're not violating anybody's rights who's already got that right. However, after having this discussion this evening, after having this discussion with the community, seeing the, the chaos that this legislation has created just here in this chamber alone, I can't do it. I can't support it. I tried. I tried my best. But, you know, sometimes you listen to the, to what your constituents have to say, and you let them make the decision. And on this one, you know, I, I, I've done my best, I've thrown my best out there. But, you know, I'm gonna let my constituents talk to me. And like I've said, from the ones who've contacted me, it's three to one against this, so I'm gonna vote no.
Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly.
You keep calling on me as I've had a comment to the previous one, so I apologize.
Sorry.
I'm having a hard time with the continual changes, and this is what I was going to say, I'm remembering now. I worry about intent, I appreciate that my Aldermen around the horseshoe want to try to make this work, but I think there are unintended consequences to making quick changes. Like, for example, what you recommended with the under or over twenty-one, does that make it that convenience stores can no longer have an eighteen-year-old be their cashier at that point? Because they won't be able to sell the tobacco products. And that's just thinking about it in, in a flash of a moment, but I also agree that we're continuing to water under this down, and water this down, and water this down. And I was in support of the original. If we continue to water it down, it is just for headlines.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
I don't know how many people responded to your Civic Sounding Board survey, Alderman Clemmons, but the Nashua Telegraph did an online survey, and there were close to eight hundred people who responded. And it was sixty-three percent in favor of raising the age to twenty-one and thirty-seven percent against. So, I don't know if that, if you're looking for, trying to, to assess the, the feeling of, of your constituents, I don't know if that helps you or, or not, but I just thought I would point that out to you.
Alderman Lopez.
I proposed the latest amendment, and then I think Alderman Melise Goya did as well, because we were following the suggestion that we compromise and address issues as they were. We just had our sincerity questioned, which I object to, because all of the state reps here promised they are going to handle this, have not done that, and are unilaterally opposed under any condition. We just entertained an entire month's delay when we could have just voted on this at the previous meeting, because an amendment was agreed to be proposed that was not proposed in that meeting, despite my explicit comment that it should be. So, we went through the whole committee process, and we still compromised. So, I don't think our sincerity needs to be questioned. I think it stands for itself. We're trying to reduce the number of cigarettes that are in the hands of children. We have an actionable step we can take right now. People's votes and people's actions speak much more loudly than their words do. So, we can generate whatever statistics we want, or we can choose whatever studies we want. Ours, the position for supporting this, those are coming from national studies, those are coming from peer-reviewed academic studies. The sounding board does not meet that muster. If you think it does, again, that speaks for itself. But I think our intentions are clear on this, and watering it down is unfortunate. I, I think in trying to, trying to be civil and trying to recognize what people are saying they're feeling, we have wandered away from the path, and I think at this point, we do just have to call it like it is and let people stand up for what they really believe for, in with their actions.
Alderman Tenza, and then Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. And so, I, I'm not sure we've necessarily heard anything new tonight that we haven't heard in the past. I don't necessarily think that there's been chaos thrown into, into this debate, because these are all points that have been brought up by people. And I don't agree that this has been watered down. I think Alderman Jettie has listened to what people's concerns were with her, his original proposal. He's been thoughtful about the amendments, he's worked with other people in bringing them forward to the committee. And so, to say that it's not, it's watered down, it's not, you know, gonna have any effect on, you know, helping curb youth smoking, I just don't think that that's correct. I think we're trying to make it more difficult for tobacco, tobacco products to get in the hands of eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-olds. And I think that with a minor amendment, we could still accomplish that. You know, as far as what's gonna happen in Concord, it may happen, it may not happen. You know, who knows what, what the legislature is gonna do, and Alderman O'Brien is right. It's not just the House, it's the Senate, it's also the governor. And whether the governor is gonna sign a bill that potentially is going to have reduced the amount of revenue that the state brings in from smoking taxes, which unfortunately is a, something we have to consider here. And that's a long process, and that's a process that's not gonna happen overnight. But this hasn't been watered down. I, I mean, I don't think people's positions are gonna, are gonna change on, on this ordinance moving forward. It seems to me we can work this out tonight and take a vote on it one way or another.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, I, I wanted to address something that Alderman Kelly had said. I don't think that there would be an issue if someone were under twenty-one selling it, because we do allow these people to sell alcohol. So, I think it would kind of work within that same thing. They probably at sixteen can't do it, but I, I think seventeen in the grocery stores and so on. So, I don't think that's really an issue. But I, I admire bringing that up as a concern and so on. But, again, and I, and I, and as far as the Chantix, the Chantix and the Nicorette gum and so on, I, I would hope that that wouldn't fall within, within this. But it is a possibility. It does refer to it as tobacco product. I don't know if those fall within the category of tobacco product. And I would hate to, to hurt somebody who was trying to go through some, some type of cessation. And again, and, and I, I do think that we are watering it down, and there is, truthfully, there is no compromise. And Alderman O'Brien did bring up the fact, or I'm sorry, Alderman Harriet Gathright brought up the fact that the members here are from the House and not of the Senate. And to say that we have not done anything in the House, I think is unfair. I have promised to go forward in September, as I know some of the others have. To say that we have done nothing to this point, we sat and did wait for the Senate to come forward. Perhaps we shouldn't have, maybe we should have put in our own, as I'm going to do. But I do think that's an unfair attack and so on. I just don't want to see this bubble in, in Nashua, and, and I agree, I think it's time to move this question forward and, and vote on it.
Did you have your hand up? Alderman Clemmons?
I, I, I did, and I, and I only wanted to quickly just address that I, I wasn't questioning anybody's sincerity here. And I'm not sure where that came from, but, you know, I understand the, and I appreciate the poll that, that Alderman Jettie said to me, but I'm talking about the constituents that reached out to me directly. And the ones that bothered to reach out to me directly are three to one against this, even the compromise. So, you know, sometimes, and again, I'm going against what I feel is the right thing to do. Because in this one, I'm gonna listen to my constituents. It's what, it's, I, I've, I've, you know, we've debated it, and then tonight, sorry, but there's just too many, there's just too many things that, you know, unfortunately, we, we can't, we can't address at all. We, we can't, there's always an exception to the rule. I live by that. And unfortunately, the rule here is, is, is too much for me. And we're better off letting the state handle it.
Alderman Schmidt.
This is such a tough decision. I wish, I, I wish it was really easy, and it's not. There's only one thing that's a real, a real loser for me on this bill, and it's that the children will be punished. I do not want to see that. I don't think kids should get in the system. I think that's wrong. And if that was gone, I would love this. Otherwise, I cannot vote for it.
Alderman Gathright.
Well, I have a question first. The state law, is there a penalty associated with that? Do you know?
I do not know.
I'm sorry. I-
Yes. I'm not, I'm not sure of the level of the fine.
Alderman Jettie is checking.
Okay.
Violation, that'd be a twelve hundred dollars. Best guess.
While he's, I'm looking that up, there was one other statement I wanted to make was, and this was one of the issues that came out of this situation here. And it was a parent of a fourteen-year-old that followed them to the store, okay? Watched an older kid go into the store, buy, come back out and give it to her son. Now, as a parent, she should have called the police. That's what she should have done. Okay? That didn't happen, you know? So, then it became another issue here. But, you know, if, as parents, and I have a fourteen-year-old, and somebody's giving them something that they shouldn't, I'm gonna call the police. And every last one of us should.
Did you have an answer, Alderman Jettie?
Yes. So, the state law currently, you know, it's eighteen, prohibits, no person under eighteen shall purchase, attempt to purchase, possess, or use any tobacco product, e-cigarette, or liquid nicotine. And for, for people who possess or use, any minor who violates this section shall be guilty of a violation, and shall be punished by a fine not to exceed a hundred dollars for each offense, or shall be required to complete up to twenty hours of community service for each offense, or both. Where available, punishment may also include participation in an education program. And I'm not done. For, for the sale and distribution of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, or liquid nicotine, two minors, fines shall not exceed two hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, five hundred dollars for the second offense. And for the third offense, the commission shall issue a letter of warning and an administrative fine ranging from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. In addition, the license to sell tobacco products by the manufacturer, wholesaler, subjobber, or retailer. subjobber, or retailer, so be suspended for 10 consecutive days and not exceeding 30 consecutive days. And it continue, for the fourth offense, it's 40 consecutive days, and the fines can go up to $3,000. So it increases, and for the person, you know, the business that sells or distributes.
Alderman Gathright.
Comment to that is that, obviously, I'm not sure why it hasn't been enforced. So, we're starting down, I guess, another way to make Nashua enforce what's already a law here, in our own little way of maybe making it a little bit less or something. I don't think that's the way for us to go. I really believe that if this is a law for the state, then it needs to be dealt with as a state, not a city. And I'm glad you gave me all that information, because I have problems with that, and I think I will tackle that.
Alderman Schmidt, and then I'll go on the side.
Already stay low, we certainly don't need it in this, then. Is that correct?
Alderman Cle.
Adding on to what Alderman Jettie said, yeah, it's RSA 126-k colon four, which is the sale, distribution of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, or liquid nicotine to minors and prohibited. And I did bring this up during the personnel, excuse me, personnel administration, because that was one of my kind of issues, is that we've made the fines much lower. Now, the state does say "up to," so it could be zero. It does not have to be $250, it does not have to be $500. They do put the words "up to" $250. The third offense does start with a letter and so on, and it becomes tougher and tougher. I think the way that this was intended, I don't know, I wasn't there when they wrote it back in 1997 all the way to 2010, but I do think it was meant for the sales and distribution via a store and so on, and not going from an 18-year-old to a 16-year-old. So in all fairness, I think that's what this statute is. The youth access to and use of tobacco products is RSA 126-k, excuse me, colon two. And that one talks about exactly what the tobacco is and so on, and discusses more of the wholesaler and the vending machines and so on, just for clarification.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's decision is gonna change by anything more than said, so I make a motion to move the question.
The question is for final passage as amended.
No change.
Roll call. Roll call on move the question? We have a motion before us to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Motion before us is for final passage as amended. By roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Milice Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
We have six yays and seven nays. Motion fails. Alderman Clemmons.
indefinite postponement.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
I object to indefinite postponement, because again, a month ago, when certain promises were made and concessions were made, the point was raised that not all the Aldermen were here, and I know the Alderman Laws was particularly interested in this legislation, was unable to address it due to family emergency.
Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly, and then Alderman Clemmons.
Forgive me if this is out of order, I'm still learning. But I know this hasn't been an easy piece of legislation, it hasn't been an easy debate. We've heard a lot from both people, both sides of the issue. I know Alderman Clemmons has stated that three to one, that's what he heard. That was not my experience, I heard more people in favor than against. And I know I've had a hard time kind of gauging where people are with that. So, as a possible compromise, I would move to put the amended ordinance on the ballot as a binding question. And let's just put our money where our mouth is, and ask the city how they feel about it.
Okay. Attorney Bolton.
Can I do that?
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how to answer that.
I don't think you can put it on the ballot as a binding question. You can put it on as a non-binding question, but I think, I think some more thought ought to go into what it is you want on the ballot, and how we should phrase the question, and to, we've, we recently went through something where we put something on the ballot that was a snap decision similar to what this would be, and I think tabling it and letting us work out how that would work, if anyone's truly interested in doing something like that, I think would be a better idea than just voting to do it tonight.
Well, my next question, Attorney Bolton, is, I know that we've been running up against deadlines to get the vacancy question on the ballot. This would run into a similar issue, I assume.
No, there's not as much to go through on something like this. You don't have to send it to state officials and get it vetted up there or anything like that.
Alderman Jettie.
Parliamentary inquiry, forgive me for my ignorance, but what is the effect of indefinite postponement? And if it, if that fails, what is, what is the status? I mean, we, the motion was defeated.
It was defeated. Indefinite postponement would mean we can't bring it up again, bring this matter up again in this term. We could bring it up next year in January.
And if the motion for indefinite postponement fails, then it could be brought up again?
It's still before the board. You have not disposed of it.
So, I would like to just follow up with Attorney Bolton. Is, if there's anything from a council perspective that you see currently that you feel uncomfortable with, I'd love to hear, because I feel like we've talked about it a lot, and I'm, I mean, what might change? What could change? Why would it change from six, how many times have we talked about this? Six times?
You probably wouldn't put every word of this whole ordinance on the ballot. It's rather long, right? So you have to propose a way to summarize it, and then are you in favor of an ordinance that would do X, Y, and Z? So, I think that is what needs work.
Okay. Follow up if I may? Could we move to put it as a non-binding on the ballot pending working out the wording?
I think the better thing to do would be to table it, and then come back and adopt what we are actually going to put on the ballot.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
In additional effort to provide more transparency, I have also asked at the committee level, and I sent an email to you and Ms. Lovering, asking that emails that were directed to the entire Board of Aldermen be included in the minutes of an agenda. So I'd like to repeat that claim during a public meeting, because I feel like people are emailing the entire Board of Aldermen expecting that to be read and recognized, and it doesn't seem like everybody is recognizing that.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, two items. I do agree with Alderman, excuse me, Lopez, about that Alderman Laws is not here. But even if he were here and were to have voted, it would have been a tie, and that tie would, would kill this. The other thing about indefinite postponement is, it goes to the end of the term. Technically, the end of the term is the end of this calendar year. So it only precludes it from coming back up this calendar year where we could take care of other business, see what the state had to do, and so on. So, I agree with the indefinite postponement.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I've had many conversations tonight, and I respect Alderman Laws. And one of the points that I made originally, to put this back in committee originally, was because there wasn't a lot of people here. And Alderman Laws was the one that pointed out to me that he didn't agree with that, because we have a quorum policy for a reason. So with that, with respect to my Alderman-at-large, who is not here, colleague that is not here, I would take his word that he told me, which is, we have a quorum for a reason. So, you know, the other, the other thing that I wanna mention, too, I'm not sure what you mean by, what somebody meant by emails being sent to the entire board, but I've never emailed the entire board on this particular subject.
Can I clarify that as a point of personal privilege? The public has been emailing us letters. I assumed you were getting them in your email. But that's another reason why they should be on public record, so that if somebody's trying to email the whole board, and not everybody's receiving them or reading them, now at least the public knows their letter was heard and that they're, it is part of the record.
So I'm not even sure where we are, what the motion is before us. It's indefinite postponement, okay? All right.
Roll call.
Okay, Alderman Kelly first.
Can I move the table?
You can move the table, it's not debatable, so.
Parliamentary inquiry.
It is not, and I agree, but parliament, true parliamentary inquiry. We had a vote, and so the vote went down, so how can you table something that failed?
Right.
It's still before the board. You don't take action by a motion failing to pass. Parliamentary inquiry, again. That means it would have to be re-brought up to the board in order for it to be tabled. No, it was, it has not been disposed of by the board at this meeting. No motion has been successful.
Yes, it went, we just voted. Roll call.
You have to adopt, you have to pass a motion to dispose of the matter. You failed to adopt the motion for final passage. There was a motion to indefinitely postpone. Then there's a motion to table, which takes privilege over the motion to indefinitely postpone, and it's perfectly in order, and it's not debatable.
Roll call.
Roll call and tabling, yes.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman Brian.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Milice Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Six yays, seven nays. The motion fails.
You backed the motion for indefinite postponement. Backed indefinite postponement.
Okay. Did you order, did you ask for a roll call on that?
Yes.
That is debatable, so. The motion before us is for indefinite postponement. Alderman Dowd.
I'm gonna support this, because nothing's gonna happen between now and the end of the year, and maybe the state will do something. I'd like to see what action the state takes, and if, if we put something on the ballot that will happen in November, we couldn't take action probably until January anyway. So I will vote to indefinitely postpone, and hopefully, given the circumstances of what happens, if it does end up on the ballot, we'll see what the public thinks and take action accordingly. If, if it's overwhelming that they want us to pass something, and the state hasn't done anything, then I think it's incumbent upon this board to pass something. If it says no, then it dies.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Just a point of clarification, if we indefinitely postpone, it won't be on the ballot.
Right.
On the ballot at all.
Right.
You have to bring it up until January.
Correct.
Alderman Lopez.
We can put anything on the ballot we want, though, so we could ask, for example, do you believe sales of tobacco products should be restricted to people 21 and older?
Response from Attorney Bolton on that? Does it act, if we vote indefinitely postpone, does it kill any chance of being on the ballot?
Any of you could bring in a resolution to put any question on the ballot that you want, in a non-binding fashion.
Thank you.
And if the whole board adopts it, we'll put it on the ballot, given, given the constraints of time.
Anything further? Motion before us is for indefinite postponement. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Nay.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderwoman Milice Gola.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have eight yays and five nays. And that motion carries. R19037 is indefinitely postponed. Second reading of ordinance 19-041, adding two student members to the Environment and Energy Committee. Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly?
I move for final passage of ordinance 19041, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
Motion before us is for final passage. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly, as the liaison to this committee, talk a little bit about the new recommendations that we've done, and how I think that there's a lot to do, and having these student members will be critical to not only getting that work done, but also having a younger mindset as we really look forward to making some real change in terms of climate, and our city, and our fossil fuels. So, I hope everyone will support this, thank you.
Motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 19041. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 19-043, updating the ordinance regarding the Board of Public Works Retirement System. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to make a motion for final passage of O19043.
Motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 19043. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. New business resolutions. First reading of resolution 19-140, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a lease agreement with the National Police Athletic League. Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Milice Goya, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. First reading of resolution 19-141, relative to the transfer of $25,000 from contingent, from Department 194 contingency account 70100, general contingency, to Department 109 Civic and Community Activities, accounting classification 56, outside agencies, for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashua Association for the Elderly. Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Milice Goya, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances. First reading of ordinance 19-044, amending the Board of Alderman Compensation Ordinance. Additional sponsors, Alderman Cle, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. First reading of ordinance 19-045, updating the financial standings
First reading of ordinance 19-045, updating the financial standings for the city's welfare
Other sponsors: Alderwoman Gathright, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment. We have three speakers signed up. Paula Johnson.
Just hold on to this. It kind of fell off. I'm kind of short. Paula Johnson, I still live in Nashua, exhausted from this whole thing. I don't know how I ever sat on this, maybe because I was younger. I would like to thank the Aldermen for this, that bill, the smoking. I want to say it takes courage to vote what you feel is right. You beat a dead horse to death. I did, I went round and round. And some of the Aldermen that I don't agree on with many times, I want to say thank you. Because, yeah, does it have to be at a state level? Yeah, I think it's better at the state level that they address it, so then it's throughout the state, not just one community and another community. And state law supersedes city anyway. I'm here to talk about, and I know it's going for its first reading, 0-19044. Let's talk about that legislation and what has happened. I was the original sponsor of that legislation. Remember Alderman Wiltshire? Remember Attorney Bolton? No, but let me refresh your memory. The reason I did the compensation, and what was the intent of this? The intent didn't have anything to do with pregnancy or adoption. It wasn't the reason why. And it had nothing to do with any of this. It had to do was, we had an Alderman, if you remember correctly, that never came to committee meetings, and he would show up more times at the full board meeting. And yet he was being paid to sit around the horseshoe for meetings and the full board meeting. That was the intent of this, not the intent of somebody being pregnant or adoption. And I'm a woman, and I have the right to say that. And I have the right to say what the intention was, because I was the original maker of it, and there was no action. But over the years, it got watered down a little bit. And the reason I made this so clear, and I sat down with Dory Clark, and we really worked on this, so nobody would be left out, but the question was, why should you be paid for meetings that you did not attend? Simple as all that. You go to work, you get paid. You don't go to work, you don't get paid. There was no sick time really here, because it's not a job. That's why we never put in certain things, because this is not a job, this is an elected position. You go to the polls, you have the voters vote for you. You get a stipend. It's not a paycheck. It is a stipend that by rights is not even supposed to have taxes taken out, if you look at the U.S. Code. This was added and after. So this is why I wrote this piece of legislation. No action was taken because that person, after it got written, decided to show up to the meetings again. And so, since this isn't a job, and if you can't fulfill your duties because of maternity or pregnant or adoption, there are other ways to be in touch with the board. You can Skype, you can FaceTime. There's a member of the Board of Education that doesn't come to any meetings anymore because he's ill, and he's telephonically. So you don't have to have this in legislation that says, because you're pregnant or you have an adoption, that you can't come to meetings. You can call in at every meeting, and you could still be part of the meeting and get paid for your presence. So when we did this, it was based on the attendance at meetings of the full board of Aldermen and the meetings of the standing committees. That's what you're paid for. All the work is really done in the committees. Am I correct? Of course I'm correct. Then you bring it to the board to vote on it, which is a sign. An absence will be excused only if due to illness, which illness could cover pregnancy, because, you know, you don't have to put down health illness and/or death in the Aldermen's family. Simple. It's simple. Let's not water it down and make it more complicated than it is. You're being paid to be here. When I was on this board, I was raising three children, worked part-time, ran a business with my husband, because he worked all the time, so I was basically raising them by myself, and I managed to be at every meeting here. Very rarely did I take any time off unless I was sick. So if you want to be an elected official, you could still have children, you could still have a pregnancy, you could still adopt, you can still have a baby, and attend every meeting. You can Skype, you can FaceTime, or you can be on the phone. This piece of legislation was written probably for somebody who, you know, and if I'm correct, I think she's pregnant. She just put her name on the legislation, which I think is a conflict now. Self-serving. And the mere fact that it shouldn't be like this, these words on the original one and the ones that were changed covers everything. Maybe you should just add in there, can be at the meeting by FaceTime, Skype, and/or telephonically, like one does at the Board of Education. So there's no reason why you can't attend a meeting unless of illness and/or death in the family. Thank you very much.
Michael O'Connor.
Michael O'Connor, 42 Berkeley Street in Nashua. And, yeah, so this is a long evening, of course, as you know, but I was glad I stuck around, and there were two positive things that I saw. One, I like that decency act you have in the civil discourse, and I'm just hoping that we'll see some of that, you know, directed towards Ms. Ordolano, who I think has done yeoman service, and I think it's fair to say, without her, without her hard work, you wouldn't be trying, you wouldn't even be aware of the mess that's, what's down in the assessing office. The second positive thing I saw tonight is you have like this recognition, you know, method. And, you know, you know, I'm a little biased, obviously, but I think Mrs. Ordolano deserves some recognition, and I think if there's an official way for you to do it, you, the board should really consider that. Lastly, in, you know, this, you know, this, I'm going to try to do this very decently, okay? I'm going to try to be kind and civil. This is, this is, you know, I could, I could claim some sort of, you know, maybe Irish disability or something. Alderman Jettie, I normally agree with you. I, you know, respect a lot. You seem a very reasonable man. And I look around, there's probably other service, you know, ex-service people here, some, you know, you know, as a Vietnam service veteran, I found it extremely patronizing, your reference to people outside the Delaney's Building as smoking and that the service had somehow, you know, caused them to smoke. Nonsense, okay? Ask any one of them, okay? I'm sure, maybe you didn't, maybe you were unaware, but it would be as if you were saying, you know, these poor people over here, you know, just have this problem because they're those poor people over there. Pick your favorite group to stigmatize. Yeah, you sit next to them, you work with, or you see them on the sidewalk, go over and talk to them. But I'm guessing, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but I'm guessing that they don't feel victims that you portray them to be, and, you know, having been forced by the military to take up smoking. Thank you.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I followed all of this discussion on smoking, and I think I've watched all of you debate it for probably seven, eight hours, and I wish you would spend a little more time, all of you, in debate on assessing. I think I've watched you really have discussions on it for just over hour and 15 minutes. Presentation on the 30th generated about 25 minutes of comments, but it was all compliments, with the exception of Mr. Jettie and I think Alderwoman Kelly asking some good questions and hard questions, which were very appreciated. Everyone was just lockstep in agreement and thought it was all wonderful. And it was an extraordinarily difficult meeting for me to sit in and watch and listen to an individual up here presenting about all the hard work, when I knew what that individual was doing, and it was anything but hard work. So I'd love to see you spend more time as a group, all of you, engaged in the topic of assessing, and give it a good 90 minutes in a board meeting for me. Love to hear that. Secondly, when it comes to Mr. Lopez's comments about attaching emails to the minutes, every email I've ever sent to this board is not attached. And I don't know that you have to request it, but for me, emails that came to this board were not acknowledged either, largely, fully. So, you know, I feel like anything I send to you just goes in the, in the can. So I'd love to see these emails put with the record. And last week, when I wrote an email to the whole board and I requested through Trish, who was on the hiring committee, she said, well, it's not separate, it's all the board members that you sent your letter to regarding your concerns about the Administrative Services Director. I went to that meeting, and I watched whoever was chairing it acknowledge that several letters had been received and put them on the record, but mine was never acknowledged, because I probably didn't ask, I guess I had to ask for it, but it seems to me they're emails you're given, and you should acknowledge them, or they should go on the record somewhere. It wasn't as if I didn't give thoughtful attention to that. Thirdly, right-to-know law. I think we've done a really poor job in this city of addressing right-to-know. You know, when I look back to October, November, and I wrote a request to John Griffin trying to access information, one of the things I asked for was the expense logs, the travel logs. I knew that there was a log system down there that was supposed to tie to the expense report. I didn't know the specific name, but I asked for the log. What I received back is no such information existed, but in fact, that wasn't true. Logs do exist, and they tie, and Kim had pointed it out when, at the last month, she asked all of the assessors to start stapling the log to the expense report. Cool. Good idea. And then I had the name of it, the full name, the, you know, expense mileage reimbursement log. But just because as a resident or as a citizen on the outside, you don't know the formal name, and you're asking, without saying RTK, but asking, it should have been given to me, and what came back was a letter that went to all of you in an Alderman meeting with the answer that no such logs exist. They existed, and I could have had that information a lot sooner, and I could have been looking at this travel information, because I went to Mr. Griffin, and I said to him, after collecting three years of data, your travel logs look fraudulent. You got a fraud issue in here. There's a problem, especially with one, that's grossly out of line. And I was told, they get back to me, he would get back to me in a week, and he did not. And then I asked for those logs and was told, none exist. I'm going to be RTK-ing for them again. Let's see what we come up with. But I feel like you're not fully honest about that type of information. And I'm now going to also try and find out, what is the name of every report you print in assessing? There's a lot of reports you can print. Just because I don't know the names shouldn't mean that I can't get them. I don't know how to request them because I don't know their titles. I sat in a meeting with Ms. Kleiner on Friday, she had a whole sales sheet done up, a bunch of data. I'm going to RTK that, but I don't know what it's called. What is that sales data? I know I've generated my own, but I have no idea what that report is. So somehow, we got a list, got a list, get a list of all the reports that are being generated, so that the public can see all these reports as well. So somebody help me figure that out. Thanks.
Remarks, five members of the board. I'll start over here. No one? Alderman Cle, sorry.
Sorry. I thought for sure somebody was going to stop. I'd like to address a couple of things. First, I'd like to address Mr. O'Connor's comments about filling the chief assessor position. I have full confidence in whether people think I'm over-complimenting or not, I have full, you know, confidence that Mrs. Kleiner will, in fact, eventually fill the chief assessors. I don't know, I've never spoken to her about it. I do think it would be a good position to do right at the moment. I think we've had enough change. I'd like to get things moving. A lot of information has come, but, you know, that's kind of one of the feelings that I have on it. But yes, I do believe that eventually we do need a chief assessor. I think each of the departments should have a director, or at least a lead assessor that, whether it's above and beyond the four, or one of the four, I think we do need something like that. I think that would be putting too much pressure on Mrs. Kleiner to hold that position as well. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to thank Paul Shea and Great American Downtown for the work they did with the new Muse Festival. It was a great event, and I think it was enjoyed by many. And I also just wanted to remind the public that the Gate City Marathon is coming up on Sunday, so there will be some traffic delays and a lot of tired people running around.
Anyone else? Alderman Karen.
First, I'd like to address Alderman Lopez's concern about the letters that came through. I did speak to our legislative manager, and what we had were letters, not emails. And she did say she would put them in as part of the record and the minutes. As far as emails that go out to the full board, I don't have control over that, but there were some letters that came in at the last minute that were left on the desk. So she is doing that for you. The other thing is, I want to thank everyone who was able to attend Fire Infusion a couple of weeks ago to benefit the Nashua Senior Center. It was very successful. They made a little bit more money than last year. We're already getting requests to hold tables for next year's Viva Las Vegas, so plan ahead. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yeah, I want to address a few comments and things that have come up over the course of our very long meeting, and I'll try to keep it brief. When we were talking about Kim, my comment, I definitely want to talk about her being very competent and collaborative. I think that was covered by a lot of people. But I feel like reducing her role to a note taker is pretty demeaning and downright incorrect, and perhaps Mr. Tebow would feel differently if she was a man. I want to address Mr. O'Connor's comments. I've raised my own concerns about eliminating the chief assessor, both publicly and to the mayor and Kim directly. I feel confident that they will look at that, and I plan to advocate for keeping the position open. That time would be at the budget meeting and making sure that we have that space for that. So I definitely see that that is something that we need to continue to look at in terms of technical experience. I want to address the tirade that happened with Ms. Johnson, but I'm not really sure where to start, so I'm just going to leave that alone for now.
Alderman Jettie.
So I too join in Alderman Lopez's request that all communications sent to the board, whether it's, you know, in writing, or, you know, a physical document or an email, I think should be part of the record. You know, today, you know, people send emails instead of letters, and so I, I don't know how.
We're working on it.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. As far as the comments made by Mr. O'Connor directed to me, you know, if I said anything to offend, you know, if he felt that I offended anybody, that certainly wasn't my attention. I am a veteran, and when you say I should speak to those people, I have spoken to those people. I know a lot of veterans who are suffering from the effects of smoking, who, you know, who contracted that addiction in the service. I'm one of them. I was introduced to tobacco by free cigarettes put in my meal kits, and that's, that's how I got introduced to smoking, and that's how I picked up the hat, what I thought was a bad habit at the time, but it turns out it was an addiction, and I smoked for a long time. And as a result of that, that smoking for a long time, I contracted cancer, and I'm a survivor of cancer. And, you know, my efforts in trying to eliminate or prevent people from becoming addicted to tobacco here were, you know, with the best of motives. I was just trying to help people to avoid that addiction, and I certainly, you know, I've had conversations with, with, you know, the veterans you, that I identified and that I identified and that you spoke about. So it, you know, I wasn't, it was not my intention to be callous towards them or to be demeaning of them. I do think, you know, if you think saying that they are victims, if my calling them victims or describing them in a manner that made you think that I was calling them victims, if you think that's wrong, I respectfully disagree. I think, you know, people who have become addicted to tobacco are, are victims. I was one of them, and I know people who, you know, not only suffered the consequences of tobacco addiction with disease, but death. And my motives were, you know, where, you know, I had the best of intentions. And, and if, if trying to save lives, if some people think that's a waste of time, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think, I think it was an effort worth making. I'm sorry it didn't work. And hopefully, our state legislatures will, will pass a law that makes it, that prohibits purchase of tobacco statewide. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Malise Goya.
I just wanted to comment on the appointment of the Administrative Services Director. And I too have had the opportunity to work with Ms. Kleiner, and as I've come to know her, I believe that if she sees things that she thinks aren't right, she will bring them to our attention. And I also believe that she will give us a fair assessment of needing a Chief Assessor there, or whether or not we at least start with outside consultation. And my reason for supporting her appointment was that I believe that she will let us know when we need someone there, or we need, she needs additional support. Also, a reminder to everyone, you may want to, if it stops raining, snowing, or whatever else it's doing, stop by the Picker Building, or the Picker Artist's Building, because the Sculpture Symposium has started, and our sculptors are there working, unfortunately, in some cold, damp weather. But they will be there through to the beginning of June, so I invite you to stop by and support them. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I too wanted to just congratulate Kim Kleiner. I think one of the nice things for here, for people in city halls, that there's a comfort level with, with Kim, and there'll be communication, good communication, both ways, for employees and for the Board of Aldermen. And I also wanted to congratulate Paul Shea, the Great American Downtown, had a chance to go down to the New Muse Festival for a couple hours. I'm always impressed with the level of the musicians that they're able to bring into Nashua, the number of people that they get downtown to enjoy. It was the one couple hours when it wasn't raining this whole month, so it was a great time, and I can only imagine the effort that he puts into pulling it all together. He makes it look, makes it look easy, so congratulations to Great American Downtown.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate Ms. Kleiner, and I'd like to make it clear to people in the city that everyone here has had dealings with Ms. Kleiner. I first did with the School Board, and was totally impressed with how she maintained relationships with people that perhaps did not always agree. And she looked at every issue as very important, and treated people who cared about things as very important as well. Nobody here just heard what the Mayor said and agreed along with it. We all have our experience with her, and we are so grateful that she is doing this for us, because I think she is the best person. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, to kind of follow up on what Alderman Schmidt had just said, and everybody, really, but, you know, I was on the Board of Aldermen before with, and Mayor Lozo was Mayor, and I was called a rubber stamp. And now we have a Democrat as a Mayor, and I'm a rubber stamp. So I guess I'm just a rubber stamp, but, no, Ms. Kleiner is, is the one for this job, absolutely, in the city. And, you know, it's funny, because one of the speakers tonight, Mr. Tebow, went on and on and on about, you know, the amount of money that, that is being handled. Well, he then went on to say that how Ms. Kleiner has over 20 years of accounting experience. Well, who would you want better than an accountant to handle all that money? So, you know, I think, I think we're making the right, the right decision there, we made the right decision. I have all the respect in the world for her, I think she's going to do an amazing job. And if she feels that, that assessing department needs a manager, I'm, I'm confident that she, number one, has the independence, regardless of what the Mayor thinks, to come forward to the Board of Aldermen and tell us that we need an assessor. But two, I have all the confidence in the Mayor that he will listen as the, as she is the manager there overseeing that, and will bring forward a proposal to do so. I think that dynamic is there, and it's good, and I think we're in good hands.
I just want to weigh in on that as well. I've known Kim for several years. She's awesome. She's professional. She's well-liked by everyone, because she puts herself out there. I can't think of anyone better to serve in that capacity than Kim Kleiner. She's, she's wonderful. You know, the Mayor gets elected, and he serves for four years, and he doesn't know everything about assessing and IT and all that, but he knows how to manage a city, he knows how to, he knows how to do that. That's what Kim brings. So, and I was very insulted about the Speaker, who thought maybe you were just a good Secretary, because that was not okay, and, you know, should not have been said, because I think a lot of you, Ms. Kleiner, and I think you know that, you made a good, good decision. Committee announcements. Wow, Alderman Dowd.
Thursday is the public hearing on the budget, at 7:00 p.m. in Nashua High North Auditorium. The full Board is expected to be there. I believe we'll have reserved seats in the front row, so that we can conduct the regular meeting going into the public hearing. And Tricia and I will be up on the stage as targets, along with the Mayor and the Chief Financial Officer, and all the Department Heads will be there. So it's an opportunity to listen to the public, and then I'll, we'll be getting in touch with the budget wrap-up, and anyone that has proposed actions on the budget should be formulating them before the wrap-up session. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Malise Goya.
P E D C next Tuesday. And as long as we're here, Alderman Dowd, I may or may not be at the public hearing, depending upon whether or not they need me for quorum at Planning Board. Since I am Alderman Tenza's Ald Schurnit, it seems like he should be there, since he's on the Budget Committee, so if I'm not there, I will be at Planning Board.
Anything else? Do I have a motion? Alderman O'Brien.
With regret, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And we are adjourned at 11:08 p.m.
Two nights in a row.